Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. The meeting was scheduled to start at 7:30. Right now it's 7:36. I see a quorum of the board is here. Mr. Gildes here, Ms. Roberts, Vice Chair Carrera, and Mr. McCrisky. So seeing a quorum present, I would ask that if you're able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, justiciable.
Thank you very much. For anybody who is looking for citizen comments, Select Board comments, Town Manager comments, they're moved a little bit later into the meeting. We have a couple of items that I'd like to pick up before we get to that. So if you're here to speak, certainly we'll have that opportunity. But we will begin right now with Town Hall Traffic and Landscape Project Presentations. This is Mark Tisdale.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well tonight. With me tonight is Craig Horstfall, the Assistant Director of Development Services, myself, Mark Tisdale, the Director of Development Services. To my right is Ronald Hedrick. He's our consultant for GPI, our landscape design consultant, and our Town Planner, Bill Roth, to his right. Just to kind of recap where we were last year, about last town meeting, we had an article for $75,000 to design this project that we're presenting in front of you tonight. And that's what we're doing. We're actually presenting the design to you for the Town Hall Landscape and Traffic Improvement Project. If you remembered, it was two parts, for the most part. It was landscaping improvements and Town Hall traffic and circulation improvements around Town Hall, improving things like ADA and other measures like that around Town Hall. The goal tonight is to really get your input and feedback on two options that we have. The two options are very similar to each other. There's one defined difference between each one. I'll let Ron get into the details later on in the presentation, but we're really looking for your input on your preferred option. Again, details like what type of plants, what types of trees, adding a landscape bed here and there, that can all be added, you know, later on, not an issue. Right now, we're looking for the bones of the project, which option is your preferred option. Again, just to recap some of the goals before I hand it over to Ron. The goals, the number one goal was what we told Town Meeting last year, and it was a plan that Craig and I actually drew ourselves. It was the number one goal was to improve parking spaces, public parking spaces, and traffic circulation around Town Hall. And I think you'll see how we achieve that tonight. Number two was landscape improvements, like we mentioned before, visual landscape improvements, and also some pocket park elements around Town Hall near the sidewalk outside. And lastly, ADA and pedestrian improvements around Town Hall. And you'll see we clearly achieved that goal. And I know Ron has probably four or five other key points he'd like to mention, what other goals we've achieved while achieving these goals. So at this point, I'd like to hand it over to Ron. He'll go through our PowerPoint presentation. It shouldn't take more than about 10 minutes or so, and then we'll answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Mark. Can you hear me? I'm going to rely on Gilda to move them forward. Well, good evening. My name is Ron Hedrick. I'm a Senior Landscape Architect and Director of Planning and Design at GPI. I'm going to hopefully get through this fairly quick, so we have time for questions and responses. As Mark said, we're here today to talk about the grounds, the circulation and landscape around this very building, which is pretty easy. There's no referencing where we are. Next slide, please. So sort of a way of introduction, we always like to look back as to what the history of obviously a great building like this is. And prior to Town Hall, this site was owned by Robert Porter, where he had a shoe and a boot shop. I noticed he was also a deacon, so I think he was into mending souls was probably his occupation. So I told myself I wasn't going to use that pun, but it was just too good. Sometime before... Maybe he's rubbing off on me. We know that sometime around, let's see if I got the date right, I think it was 18, around the 1800s, that the Great Fire burned and destroyed where the Town Hall was, which was the Atwood Mill or the Atwood Hall, which was just a couple blocks down the street at the corner of Washington and Railroad Ave. But the new Town Hall was planned, next slide, please. And it originally housed pretty much all the town functions, including police, fire, library, post office, the Select Board. And we found this great old postcard with some handwritten notes on it showing what it looked like back then. And you can see kind of the landscape around it, much simpler time where traffic just kind of flowed right off of that intersection with Washington Street. I thought one of the most notable things about it was the port cochere on the south side of the building, which it does note was later removed. I didn't know that existed until I saw that postcard. And interestingly enough, the Town Hall was built, you know, in a growing town to house public meetings. So this great space that we're in was built, and according to this old card here, it housed about 1,200 people, 900 on the floor, and about 300 in the balcony, which I'm trying to imagine where that would have been. But it also got me thinking about the word Town Hall and where the origins of that come from. Next slide, please. So a couple views of the existing, this one looking from Pearl Street kind of southward. You can see that, you know, as you're all familiar with this, there's a lot of asphalt around the building, much like that old photo. The building sort of sits on kind of this bit of a rise in the topography, but it's a lot of asphalt with sort of a green strip of lawn and some trees around the edge. Next slide. Moving forward a little bit, this is looking kind of due west towards the main facade of the building. You see the memorial bell and the flagpole there. Next slide, please. This is kind of the money shot here from where Washington sort of merges into Pearl Street and Porter Street, looking at the entrance that's there. It's a little hard to pick out, but there's a memorial stone kind of buried between those burning bush there. Basically, it says Stone Town Hall, and it has 1796, I think it is, the founding date of the town, not of the Town Hall itself. And let me see, one more shot. This is from Porter Street, looking due north at the building. And I want you to take note here of, obviously, the port cochere is gone, but there's this large block wall here that kind of comes off that corner out towards Porter Street. Keep that in the back of your mind, because when we get to the options, we're going to be talking about that wall and its potential removal and what that does for us. But at this shot, you can actually see not only the sort of what we call the employee parking, which is the upper side, but starting to get back into the backside of the building where the, I'm sorry, the front side is the public parking and the backside is the employee parking, including these four spaces right here. Next slide, please. So a number of, sort of a summary slide of assets and issues associated with Town Hall. As I mentioned, there's the memorial bell out front of Town Hall and the adjacent flagpole. There is the accessible entrance, which is a great thing. That was added quite a few years ago, but that gets people up into the building. There's one larger specimen tree, number four there, out towards Pearl Street. It's a maple tree. And then there's a pedestrian entrance and the memorial stone there at the corner of Pearl and Porter. In terms of, this is where my eyesight starts to fail me a little bit. In terms of some of the issues we see on the site, we definitely have a lack of pedestrian connectivity and ADA access. And a couple examples of that is, there is a sidewalk you can see kind of coming from the corner up along, kind of parallels Pearl Street, and it has sort of a connection on either end of that landscape area, and then it sort of directly connects over to the stairs and the ramp of Town Hall. But what is missing is the handicap spaces just to the kind of north side of the main entrance don't have any sidewalk, any connection at all to that access ramp, nor do any of the other parking spaces have any kind of pedestrian network. And certainly, those are all very good things to have for safety and for connectivity, but certainly the ADA spaces are supposed to have, you're supposed to have the ability to get out of your car, get directly onto an accessible route and into the building, and that does not exist. Because of all the asphalt, it's an attractive building, but it does suffer somewhat on its curb appeal. There's a limited landscape materials palette. It's mostly lawn with some trees and shrubs. Like, I noted there's burning bush at the corner. We don't plant burning bush anymore because they're considered invasive, so there's some of those older kind of standards that their time has come and gone. There's no seating, there's no bike racks, there's minimal available public parking. In fact, some of the spaces out front are parallel spaces on a curve. That's a pretty challenging trick for anybody to park. So there's a couple spaces within the site, even though you might count them as a space, they're really not usable spaces the way they've been done. I think we totaled that at about five total between the employee and the public space. There's inefficient parking space layout. I like to think that I can always squeeze another space out of it, and you'll see that we did find a few more spaces, pulled a few tricks out of our sleeve. And we've addressed some of the poor traffic circulation within the site. In particular, when I mentioned that wall, what you'll see is the difference between the two concepts, which I'm calling the base concept and the add-all concept, is that we consolidate the lower entrance going out onto Porter Street, and that gives us, well, there it is, that gives us some efficiency that we find a few spaces. Next slide, please. So here is the plan. It's a little, maybe a little difficult to see, but let me tell you, the overall design goal and some of the objectives we sought to kind of add into this project. The goal is pretty much to improve the Town Hall environments to better accommodate the citizens of Stone. And some of the elements or the objectives, provide a safe and complete pedestrian network, provide barrier-free ADA-compliant pedestrian pathways. And that's not just coming from the parking spaces, it's coming from the public ways and all the kind of, you know, desire lines. Meet the local zoning to the greatest extent feasible. That's kind of where Bill comes in, that we're looking to make this a model project, kind of make it conform to the greatest extent to the regulations and not hold ourselves above that. Incorporate a pedestrian plaza at the corner of Porter and Pearl. There is a little space there, an entryway, but we're looking to do better than that. We want to relocate the memorial bell, flagpole, and memorial stone to more accessible locations, kind of to accent some of the spaces we've created. We want to provide additional shade trees and seasonal color, provide benches and other amenities, improve upon the site traffic circulation, and provide more efficient public parking. So basically, all addressing the issues that are there. Next slide, please. So parking concept one, or what I think of as the base, if this were to go out the bid tomorrow, I would call this the base bid, we've estimated it to be about an $830,000 project. Kind of a breakdown of our estimate on the left there, kind of using standard kind of nuggets there. General requirements, things the contractor will be required to do, existing conditions, much of which is site demolition, you know, removing objects, storing them, and putting them back. There's some masonry, metals, woods and plastics specialties, including, I think it's a variable message sign falls under specialties, earthwork, exterior improvements, utilities, and then we'll get into sort of this add-all. And so that parking summary chart, you can see there that we estimate for the usable spaces within the entire site to be 38. And with the proposed improvements under this base bid, we're adding to that six spaces for a total of 44. We're finding a few more within the employee parking area, although we're losing a couple because of the just not really workable spaces. Two of them actually are partially on private property next door. We're maintaining or adding to the public visitors, and we're maintaining the two spaces that are currently out on Porter Street. Next slide, please. For the second option, or the kind of what I call the exit consolidation, the add-alternate, this is a price that adds on to it. It brings the total up to about $1.12 million. And it's essentially, as Mark said, it's a very slight difference. I like to sort of click back and forth between the two because you can kind of see the little things move, but it's essentially the exit there, kind of in the lower left of the concept, where instead of having two exits so close to each other out onto Porter Street, we remove that wall, basically reconfigure the wall in front of Town Hall to bring all circulation down to that back circulation aisle and then out on the porters. So it's an efficiency thing that we gain more space for parking. It's a safety improvement because now we consolidate down to one exit, crossing the sidewalk, which is important because there's a very important crosswalk over to the post office there. You also, you get rid of the tandem kind of exits where you can run into trouble with people pulling out on the Porter Street. And that additional exit consolidation, we estimate it to add about another $293,000. A large part of that is the wall demolition and rebuild. But by doing so, we add another four spaces, so we end up with 48 spaces, which in our mind is about 10 more usable spaces than what you have out there today. Next slide, please. So of that 830 or $1.12 million, we have a follow-up meeting here. We're touring the Town Hall tonight. We are going before the CPC to, we put in a pre-application with them for a request of approximately $600,000. So we'll be looking to fund the rest of the project other ways. Items included in the CPC funding scope are brick pavers, seating, landscaping, public information sign, and protective bell enclosure, all the things that they really like to see. Obviously, the building is historic, but I think it's under open space. Our application to them would be under open space because it really deals with the surrounding landscape. So the things that, above and beyond that are going to be the pavement, the curbing, the concrete sidewalks, all the things that are kind of typical to parking, drainage, that sort of thing. Next slide, please. So now I'm just going to walk you through real quick, kind of give you a sense of the four major spaces we're creating. Obviously, I've talked about the parking, but these are kind of what we're calling the pocket parks, or some of the public space around it. The first one being the corner public park at the corner of Porter and Pearl, a flagpole pocket park up by the corner of Town Hall, and then two smaller pocket parks. Next slide, please. So this is the corner, the way it looks today. There is an entryway to the sidewalk that goes up and crosses over the parking to the main entrance here. It's a couple granite posts and some granite curb here, and of course, the memorial stone. But it's pretty overgrown and not particularly inviting. Next slide, please. So this is our vision of what that would look like. We really open it up, make it inviting. You see kind of a center ramp going up between walls here so that it's very, very direct up to the access up, so that we've sort of put access front and center. We're not hiding your ramp around the corner or anything. We've got some staircases on the side for people to sort of leisurely come up and down or sit on those. There's about four benches kind of tucked either side of that central kind of corridor. You've got the variable message sign over to the right and a bell enclosure over to the left. So it's intended to be a visible and inviting sign to Town Hall, completely accessible. Next slide, please. This is an image looking north, and you can see the flagpole in the distance, but you can kind of see at this corner, there's not a lot going on. Next slide, please. This is sort of the vision of the crosswalk coming up from the plaza at the corner, which would be off to the right. There's a crosswalk with a raised speed table here, coming into a little plaza space with the flagpole, and again, some benches and some landscaping, really at the corner of the building, really improving upon that, kind of splitting circulation to either And again, there's a motif of kind of a brick paver throughout these, that you can see kind of that reddish color. It sort of picks up on the building but pulls it through each of these spaces. Next slide, please. Here's a view looking at the eastern facade of the building. You can see the existing stairs and handicap ramp and the existing parking. There's no connections from the parking to those, to the ramp. Next slide, please. So what we envision here is a smaller seating area kind of off to the right, if you were looking at the building of the stairs, a place where people can wait for someone to pick them up, rest, take a break. It's intended as a much smaller space, but just a point of rest or waiting or whatever it might be. So a couple benches and some decorative pavement. Next slide, please. And then kind of the last image here of looking again at the east entrance of the building. You've got the current conditions with the bell and the flagpole. Next slide, please. We've relocated the bell over to the corner plaza. The flagpole's been relocated over to the corner of the building where it's more visible. And we've moved the memorial stone from the corner over here where it's more prominent, a little more accessible to people with a couple benches along Pearl Street. So those are sort of the four major spaces that make up the landscape areas, and a large part of which we're presenting to the CPC tonight. Next slide, please. So here's a kind of a stab at a schedule. This is really kind of, it plays into some of the CPC part of it, but you know, there's a pre-application went back in in October, there's an application due in, I'm sorry, the pre-application went in in September, there's an application due in October. We're looking to try to, if this moves ahead with your approval, we would be seeking to probably get some kind of funding, additional funding on a town warrant and have that in a town meeting so that we can proceed then with construction. That would be the annual town meeting? Okay. All right. I think that pretty much does it. Yeah, so that's my presentation, and turn it over for questions and answers.
Ron did a pretty good job explaining everything, so you know, generally, there's a lot of information here. You may need time to digest it, but if you have any questions, ask us now if you, at a point where you'd like to get through the questions and pick a preferred option, we can do that. There's a lot of different roads we can take from tonight.
So I believe there might be some people who have questions, if you don't mind me just seeing if there's anything outstanding. Are there any questions right now? Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this mic is working. I have really primarily two questions. If we could go back to the front of the building, that corner that you modified...
The one with the flagpole?
And had the bushes.
Gilda, could you pop that back up? Back to the corner of Pearl and Porter?
Yes, please.
Back to the...
That area.
Yeah.
So my question is regarding traffic. I see it's a heavy traffic area, and everyone knows. So as the traffic is bearing to the left, is there ever an instance of speeding, traffic violations? Because I envision myself sitting at that corner, and then as cars are coming around that corner saying, oh, that's kind of too close for comfort. Have you considered that, or maybe that's just something that I'm concerned about personally? Right where that lamppost is, there's some benches.
It would be the, it would be traffic taking the right from Pearl onto Porter, I assume? Is that the movement you're concerned about?
No, as they approach that intersection and they make a left turn. So now that area that we're seeing is on our right side. Okay.
Yeah. So you're coming up, oops, sorry.
What I'm thinking is traffic is speeding, and they're making a left turn.
Mm-hmm.
So they could be sitting here, so does that, you can't turn to the left turn. Right now, it's illegal.
No, no. We're talking about coming up right up to Washington Street and taking a left. That left, not the left you're thinking about.
Yep.
So, I mean, I'll just, from what I've seen, that's a good question, Deborah. It's a very good question. What I can see is, it looks like we provided an adequate buffer. You can see where most of the seats are, is beyond the stairs in the back platform, which is protected by a lot of granite structures. And you've got a light pole, and then you've got probably, geez, I don't know, 20, 30 feet of area before you're actually sitting. So you're protected by a lot, so you're not sitting like right on the street, which I think you would be concerned about.
That's right.
I could see you taking that perspective by looking at this.
Right.
But you're actually set back pretty far off the street, wherever you're sitting.
Okay. So additionally, that visual is not accurate. So I understand what you're saying now. We're not flush against the street. We have some way, and granite is, that's a buffer right there. Granite is a strong element.
Right. So the light pole is actually there right now. We're not moving that main light pole, although the more I look at this picture, I feel like it should be moved, but...
It doesn't go with the decor now, but anyway.
As of right now, that light pole is still there. And then there's a sidewalk there, and then there's a granite curbing for the actual road. So you actually have layer after layer of protection before it gets to a pedestrian.
And I would add that in plan view, we're actually maintaining the width of the sidewalk, and everything that's occurring is occurring behind the sidewalk. So where that brick banding starts is kind of additive. And to your point, it's a great point, and it's a busy intersection, but it's also an interesting intersection. So it's a place where people may not want to sit, or it might be a place where people want to people-watch. But we're offering those sort of options where you can sit closer on those granite seat walls, or because it's up a couple, I think it's about a foot and a half rise, that the benches are actually raised up above the street level and set back further. So it's a little more comfortable, so you can kind of be part of the bustling downtown, but be away from those threatening automobiles.
That's a very good description. Oh, yes, Craig.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point out that on this particular slide, and it might be tough to pick up, I don't know if you have colored printouts, but you can see that the seating elements are actually behind where those big burning bush plants are today. So those seating elements are actually further away from the roadway today than that whole paved area is right now. So it is a bit more of a buffer than, even though it's a bit more open and seems like it's more on the street front, it's actually set further back.
Oh, that's wonderful. That gives me an added comfort. The second question is regarding to ADA compliance, and it is parking spaces for those that are challenged with walking, seeing, and the whole bit. Did we lose any of the spaces, the parking spaces? Did we lose any of the spaces, the parking spaces in the front of the building or did we gain only for those that are restricted?
We did. Yeah, we maintained the numbers. I don't think the numbers were deficient, but we maintained the required number of accessible spaces. But we've pulled them right up in front of the ramp so that they're directly connecting now. And there is the required, you get off, you get onto the sidewalk and the ramp will be right there. So we've actually improved upon it.
So, oh, that slide. So that may, currently there are maybe two or three parking spaces and that's to the right of the steps, correct?
Correct.
It's two accessible spaces.
Two accessible spaces. Did we lose those or did we gain one more?
We've simply relocated these here in the front of the building. So as you can see in that original picture there, there's no place for them to walk except for in the drive aisle. So they get out of their vehicles and have to walk in the drive aisle over to the accessible ramp. In the new configuration, they can get out of their vehicles, get into the loading space in between the two spaces and go up onto a sidewalk area which connects directly to the ramp in front of the building.
Spaces remain the same. The accessible walking spaces improve. That's what my takeaway is.
There are two in the front of the building today and there will be two in the future. The space behind the building in the rear parking lot, which is sort of in that drive aisle, which in no way complies with today's standards, that also gets relocated and reconfigured so that it is a standard accessible space and has a pathway into the building.
I would just like to add one thing and then I'll let you, Bill. The three accessible spaces we have around Town Hall today are inaccessible. If you, I mean, they really aren't. I mean, think about it. You park out front over here, Tom. Hey, Tom, right over here, out front. It's an inside joke. He's always pointing like in different directions. So the accessible spaces up front over here, think about it, you pull up, you get, you get out of your car, then you have to actually walk into the parking lot.
Show the existing condition just for me.
Right here, yeah. So you actually get out, then you walk into the parking lot to get to the ramp and then you go up the ramp. So you literally have to go into an area where vehicles are driving technically, right?
Right.
That doesn't comply with the standards at all. So if you go to the next slide, now you park and you can't quite see it totally here, but there's a sidewalk in front of Town Hall now. So you come out of your car, you're going to get into a compliant loading area that has an accessible ramp right into our sidewalk here that goes to the other ramp to get into Town Hall. So we're making really just non-compliant accessible parking spaces, if you want to call them that, accessible now. And we're, there's three total at Town Hall and we're doing the same thing to all three. And you'll see in the back parking lot, what slide is the back parking lot?
It's way down.
Shoots up on the overall.
Yeah.
It's on the overall.
What slide is that?
It's the one with the tables, right there, right there.
Yeah, right there. So if you can kind of see, see in that, the back employee parking area, although that's an employee parking area, that's a public parking space. So we're actually defining a public parking space back there with a crosswalk going right to the back Town Hall door, which is not there. Right now, you're literally parking in the middle of the drive aisle to get into the Town Hall.
And I do wish to point out, and this is a good slide to look at, if you notice from the previous slide, there's only two parking spaces, the handicap that you have to walk behind your car. If you look at this, right where Jilda's thing is, there's eight parking spaces now that are, there's the Town Hall, the handicap ramp, the sidewalk, and then there are eight spaces right in front and two of them are, will be accessible. So it's improved a lot of access. And one of the other ADA access things that we added is when you come off of Pearl Street to the top of the picture, there's no sidewalk there currently. And right just above where Jill does this, there will be a sidewalk along our neighbor's property over here that then crosses down. So we've improved access from Pearl Street as well.
Thank you very much. That answers all my questions and very comfortable with the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Carrera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ron, you all right? Slide, it's near the last end, there's a slide that has a four on it says Memorial Pocket Park proposed. I'm not worried about the pocket park. I just want you to look at the building. You have the center entrance, how it's up to the top, you see it's got like the octagon roof. To the right, you have two flat roofs. They're shallow, they're, they're down. Ice forms in the winter there and the chunks come off like you can't believe. And there's been cars that have been hit. My wife's truck was hit. There was $2,800 dollars due to damage to that. There was a car that was hit. There was one person almost got hit. And the benches are right in the avalanche flow. So I'm not saying take them out, I'm just saying we might have to do a little something to the, to the roof to try to intercept or, it was funny, when the carpet gutters were there, they weren't making ice. When the carpet gutters disappeared, when the roof was put on and they're galvanized, now they make ice. So it's a little weird, but I just want to point that out here before we get in there and somebody decides to sit there in the winter and that might come off. So that's, that's the only, only thing I wanted to point out.
Appreciate that.
That sounds like something that should be addressed now without the project happening.
Well, yeah. But nobody kind of hangs out there, usually the cars take it. The grade there, when you take the wall out, is that, is that going to be steep or is it going to be like, because it's like almost eight feet at one end.
First of all, before Ron, I knew you were going to ask that question.
I was just trying to figure out how you change that kind of grade without the wall.
Just so you'll know, you're answering for two people because I have some serious...
Okay, yeah, so that, that's probably the number one question, I would think, between the two options, like what, is this kind of, are we sliding down the hill to get to the entrance, the exit, I mean? So I'll let Ron answer with the technical details, but generally speaking, just go look at that wall and look at it head on. Look at, look at it head on and look at the grade on each side. It's very deceiving because the wall's probably about a foot and a half higher than the grade near it on the top end. So it looks like it's a six-foot wall from the low side. From the low side, but it's not. You subtract about a foot and a half to two feet of elevation off and you got maybe what, three to four feet of elevation difference. And if you work it in from where that front entrance is, where the stairs are, that's where you start your grading down. It's going to be what percent grade?
It's, it's about four to four and a half percent in the current. If you were to come from the doorway and go down the driveway, it's about eight and a half currently. So it's much steeper towards the road. So that's another benefit of modifying that exit is that you get it down to about a four, four and a half percent grade, which is, which is much more forgiving if, again, in an icy condition, if you start to descend and you realize it's icy, you won't stop until you're out into Porter Street.
I wasn't, I wasn't too worried about the cars. I was worried about the backhoe taking on Anastas's building when he's flowing.
Yeah.
Thought it might work too.
Yeah, and to make it all work, so what we've done is we, for that option, we would remove that wall, potentially reuse some of the stone in it, but we would rebuild a wall that held the grade to the building as it is, but then let the sidewalk and roadway slope down.
That's, that's what I was trying to figure out because I couldn't see. It looked like it showed a walkway straight through and I'm like, they got to be holding something.
You're almost doing this, Scott, right? If this is the building, we're taking that wall and we're curling it against the building.
Right. Okay.
So we're making a planter there out of a wall.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll say thank you guys.
Mr. Gino, do you have any questions?
Could you show the, the ramp again and where the parking spaces are for handicapped?
This is the front ramp right here.
Can you zoom in a little bit, Bill? The plus sign at the top, zoom, maybe zoom in a little bit.
Right here, where the bench is, is where this is where his wife's car got hit because that's a handicap space currently. And back by the blue is, and now we've got to propose the handicap ramp is immediately in front, either side with the storage area that goes right to the front of the ramp that go up. So you've eliminated about 150 plus feet of travel length, which is currently in the drive aisle and now it's immediately in front. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think the other thing to notice there too is that it's not just the, it's not just providing or improving the accessible route from the spaces, but we've added a sidewalk across the entire front of the building, which provides protection to the building. It's kind of vulnerable in places because cars can get so close to it. So we've been able to provide a sidewalk, in fact, on both the east and the south side that wasn't there before, that, that allows anybody that gets out of their car to kind of cross right over and get onto a sidewalk, which, which benefits them from a safety perspective and just sort of, you know, getting them to the doorways, but it also benefits the building because it protects the edge of the building.
Can you add another parking space for handicapped in that area or do you have space if you would take one of the normal spaces away? In other words, is there space for three as opposed to two?
We've actually added, if you have been here where the handicap is, there is this handicap space right here that is floating in the parking lot, for the lack of a better term.
I'm talking about in the front.
Oh.
Yeah.
It also provides accessibility to the building.
Right, right. Is there space where your pointer is now for?
You could add, you could add another space, but the reality is because each accessible space has to have an aisle space with it, you would probably lose, you would take two spaces to make one. Sometimes we can get clever about where those go, but in this case, two, two spaces share the same striped out aisle. Does that make sense?
Some, some handicap spaces don't have that additional space.
They're supposed to. Sometimes, sometimes we can trick them into sidewalks or other space, but, but they're generally supposed to have a space in, on one side of the car or the other where, where people can sort of, you know, just onboard the car and then get to the...
The reason I ask is more people that seem to be interested in doing business in town and coming to meetings are not, not my age, but closer than, than they are to my grandchildren's age.
Yeah. Well, it's definitely if we were to do that now is the time because...
The second question I have is when you were showing the sidewalk before in that, in that park in the beginning, did you move the sidewalk out into Pearl Street and Porter Street or is that the same configuration as it was?
Same configuration.
That's what I thought, but I, there was some discussion about that. I just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McCrisky?
In the presentation, you mentioned compliance with regulations. What regulations are we not compliant with now?
None of the accessible parking spaces are compliant.
In what way?
They don't, we just explained them. So you don't have an accessible route to the building. You have to get into the parking lot to actually walk to the building.
Regulations define exactly what that...
Absolutely. Craig and I have been dealing with this our entire life, designing these things on tons of plans.
Okay.
This is part of what we review when planning board plans come into the town. These are specific regulations, the ADA and AAB regulations regarding that.
Okay. So we'll be talking more about this, I would imagine, as we go along?
Right. So I mean, the goal, the goal is to have an article at town meeting for the annual town meeting, so there's time to massage this and, you know, craft it.
I do not like at all the side entrance, the corner entrance, moving the bell to that location. As you all know, I'm a history nut, you know, and to me, that changes the total look. For years and years and years, we have been gathering on the front steps of Town Hall on Memorial Day and Veterans Day to remember those fallen Stoughton residents that served our country. You're moving the bell to the corner. You know what the traffic is like? If you haven't been here, everybody knows on Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Unfortunately, most people work for a living and we're celebrating out here where people sit on that lawn area, we use in Pearl Street that we can shut down very easily, but now you're going to move it to a corner, which is going to have people in the roadway on a corner. That is just not good for me at all. Not good at all.
Stone and the bell.
I mean, it totally changes that, you know, and that is the one thing that I will never support ever is changing in a negative way unless you could show me how it's not going to be negative when we're out remembering veterans. So it's, it's an easier thing to do if there can be some redesign of that that puts the bell where it is, you know, so that we can efficiently continue those the way it's been done for a long time at Stoughton. I would be open.
So we actually, Joe, you bring up a good point. So we've, we've tinkered this around too, but we didn't think about it from the perspective you just mentioned, so thank you very much. The memorial stone that we had on the side of Pocket Park, if we could go to that picture?
Yeah, I saw that one, yeah.
I mean, you could swap out the bell with the memorial stone.
That's what I'd rather see because that sign as well, that many people don't know, you may know, was an Eagle Skull project.
Yep.
You know, and that gentleman, young man, went and raised all the money himself to put that sign up and did the whole project. So, you know, it's, I'm glad that it's not being moved. And I've got some strong reservations on the wall, so I'm going to be looking for some, some guidance here.
Yep.
You know, I go to you all the time, but this is just first time I've heard of it, seen it, you know, so just want to get my comments on the record. So I'm more than glad to sit and talk, but that wall's been there a long time.
Yep.
A long time, you know, and I'm just skeptical.
We want to use, use parts of the wall.
Yeah.
We want to...
Well, again, it just, even with that, I look at the grade and again, you know, I've told you, when I look at a plan and you look at topographical maps, I just see squiggly lines. Scott understands that, I don't. But when I'm standing there, I don't care what way you configure that. That's a steep, that's going to be a steep grade getting down to be able to utilize that side driveway as the way out. I just can't see it, so.
Drive down the driveway now when you're exiting and just stop there and look at the pitch of your car when it's facing Porter Street. That's going to be, that's a much steeper, almost double the pitch of what we're going to end up with.
Would you say seven, six or seven percent?
Yeah. I know, it's tough to actually realize that.
I understand because I look at where that is and I understand your conversation about the height of the wall from when you're standing there, you know, where, where stand, that wall's up about that big. I know that. But just getting from that low part of that wall down to where you're going to meet the grade of that rear drive, that's one you got to really show me because that just, to meet that grade, it looks like you're going to be coming back to almost the middle of the building.
You're going to be coming back to where the stairs are in the front of the building.
See, I just can't understand that, but I'm looking forward to hearing more.
Yeah, just, just to clarify that, the four percent, four and a half is running from the upper corner of the... from the upper corner of the building to the lower. So the whole, the whole parking is pitching at about a four to four and a half.
Okay, well, I just heard the stairs.
Yeah.
The grade starts at the stairs. Now, where does it start? At the corner of the building over here? The front corner?
Yes, front corner, the.
Okay, so that whole area then is going to be?
Yeah.
A grade going down?
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Correct, because you don't have the other driveway anymore. So the grades actually, instead of coming down this way towards Porter, you're going parallel to Porter. Right until you get to the other exit.
So isn't that going to create, to get that grade, isn't that going to create, and I'm looking at my plans here, isn't that going to create a different grade on the corner of the building?
Yes, the grades are changing.
I mean, so right from this corner of the building, you're going to be going grading down?
So that's.
That going to have any effect on the foundation? Are we going to be exposing a part of this foundation over here now?
No, we're, we're building a retaining wall in front of the foundation to protect it.
Okay.
So it'll act like a planter, that the grade will stay the same at the building, but the.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't see that here when I was looking, I couldn't really.
The wall that's coming out, like if you, this is the building, we're literally just rotating the wall against the building, and there'll be a planter buffering the building. And the grade will actually be shallower, and then it'll, so the wall will be barely existent, and then it gets more and more revealed the deeper you get into the.
The existing stone, can that be used for that wall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the rest will be a barbecue pit.
Those are good questions, they're really good questions. They're actually the two, the bell and the grade are the two key questions I thought anybody would answer coming into this conversation. I mean, maybe, maybe a good perspective on this, if you're, you guys have a good perspective of what the public's going to ask, maybe we need a perspective rendering from the side showing the grading coming down.
Sure.
So people understand what it actually physically looks like. Like we saw perspectives from the corner and from the other side, we'll show a perspective from that side, and it shows you the grade coming down, and that should answer all your questions.
I'm not really happy with the reduction in so much grass myself. I know there's some people who say, wow, he's asking about grass and trees, you know, but I'm not the enemy. But it seems like we're really losing a lot.
You got to balance out your parking, your ADA improvements with the loss of grass, but also the landscape area you are retaining is going to be more beneficial than the grass we have now. There's going to be pocket parks, a lot more plantings around Town Hall to make it pop. So the smaller percentage of landscape you have now is going to look better.
What we using, what were you using for comparisons on? I keep hearing the pocket parks. I don't see people sitting around Stoughton Center unless they're waiting for a bus, you know, and nobody's going out grabbing a cup of coffee and sitting somewhere. So, well, I mean, if that's what we're thinking, fine, we can take a shot at it, but it's, you have to to get your sanity. You should have the one little, you know, one little area where you can close the door and just listen to trees and birds chirping. You'd need some of that, you know, but no, I'm open, but I'm.
Mr. McCrisky, I can look at some of the pocket park in the corner that we're looking at is the new Stoughton Center zoning requires for public amenities, the developers to do certain things, hardscapes, providing bike racks, providing benches, you know, providing public, in the public realm and amenities. So one of the goals that we looked at was to, and this is the corner of the downtown, you know, and it's the highly visible, is to look at taking the concepts and the requirements that we are requiring the private sector to look at doing when they redevelop, to look at doing it ourselves to, you know, as Rich mentioned, more of a demonstration, but I look at it, and when I was part of this, is we want to set the bar and show through this project what we want to see and what we want to see, you know, transform in the downtown when things get redeveloped.
Well, you bring something up, and now you've, you've posed a question. I think I usually watch development happening in town. What developments have we put in where we've installed a pocket park?
It's, we're calling it a pocket park, it's just, it's the public amenities space.
What have they done for public amenities?
The former zoning, the former zoning did not require it. The new, the new Stoughton Center District, which.
Okay, so we haven't, we haven't required it now, this is something we're going to require moving forward, and we're going to start it.
It is on the books now, it's, we do, we have not had a project developed under the Stoughton Center District downtown. So the hole in the ground was done under the schmooed, so, and we're very excited, there's potentially, you know, several redevelopment sites in the downtown that hopefully in the near future will, will be coming forward and providing some of these public amenities.
Again, this is the first, the first pass, okay, I mean, if, if people aren't excited about that, we just, we're done with it. We move forward, you know, we go in different directions. We want everybody to be proud of this project, we want you to be happy about it. It's supposed to be a positive thing, we really, we really want you to be positive.
I see a lot of positive in it, Mark. I see a lot of positive, but hey, listen, I tell, I say now, I'm getting older, and I'm starting to be the person that would have not liked me when I first got elected, you know, but you change, and you, and I like positive movement. We've accomplished a lot together, you know, this team, and I like the thought process. But when I hear the pocket parks, we put one in at the, down on Pearl Street as part of the new high school, I've never seen anybody sitting there, ever. The only thing I've seen for activity there is Mrs. Harbeck, her and her husband out of their own pocket decorated with lights at the holidays. It does look nice, I still never see anybody sitting there. So I guess I'm a little skeptical as when we go putting pocket parks in, you know, it's, who's using them? Because I don't see it.
You definitely can't compare this pocket park to that one. That one's a different pocket park, it's on a main road, it's not a public building.
This one's in a major intersection, it's, this one's here, the busiest intersection in town, that's quieter.
Here all the time, we, people come to our Town Hall all the time, it's in a central location, and if anybody's going to sit at a bench, it's going to be around Town Hall, not on Pearl Street outside the high school. Personally, that's my opinion.
Well, we're, we're in the early stages, we'll see, I'll talk to you a little bit more.
Yep. I think we have one more question from Ms. Roberts, and then I'd like a couple comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This design is focused on public parking, visual landscaping, and ADA compliance, but through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Coulter, I remember some time ago, you talked about an electronic sign. Out in the front, does this change your direction on the signage?
I thought something was wrong with my mic.
This would be the signage. That has not made it through the Standing Committee or the Finance Committee in two budget cycles. This would be part of this project. It would replace what we had previously planned.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So the only question I have is actually very similar to Mr. McCrisky's, and I did reflect on the fact that that bell was part of the ceremony and as well as the flag during both Veterans Day and Memorial Day. And, and where the flag is, strike, where you're proposing it be moved to actually strikes me as a very good location, because people don't just have to be on the side of the building, now they can kind of wrap around the side, and everyone's looking towards that corner, and that makes, and that, that works out pretty well. And my only, my only concern was that that, the bell get, winds up in a place where it's, you know, it's part of the, of the service, but it's, it's not easily viewed from that location, or not, maybe not as easily viewed, you know. I'm looking at pictures, so it may, for all I know, it might be actually the ideal location, maybe it's very easy to see it. But, yeah, moving the bell either to the center or closer to the flagpole, or even like right at the entrance of Town Hall, you know, something like that where that's easily accessible, I think is probably the only critique you'll get from me, otherwise everything looks excellent. The, the stand-up question to me, and I, I think I know where this is going, but, or you might, might think, but I'll ask it anyway, is that there, there are two proposals. One is for roughly $830,000, and the other one is for 1.124 million, if one, or 3 million. With CPC, you know, listeners for the time being assume the best, and they agree, and they fund $600,000 for this project. Between those two options, the least, less expensive one, the costs are covered best, 72% of the costs are covered by that, with 28% remaining. With the slightly more expensive version, we get, we do get four more spaces, as well as what I would believe is a safer entrance and exit from, from Town Hall, or in this case, exit from Town Hall. But it comes at a cost of an additional, was it 200, $300,000-ish? And the CPC funds now cover only about half of it instead of, instead of seven tenths. And so there's a part of me that, that likes the idea that if you're doing it, let's do it right, and, you know, do it once, you know, we're going to touch this building, if we're going to change the landscaping every 50 years, you know, let's, let's do it, let's do it right now. And so I'm not necessarily against the idea of spending more if, if that serves the public for longer. But I do want to get your opinion as to whether or not you believe that change is significant enough to warrant these, these additional concerns.
Personally, I, I'm, I like to do it once, do it right kind of person also, that's how we've done every project that I have ever worked on. So to me, it's worth the extra $300,000, we should do it once, you do it right. But I also understand the perspective that some things need to be clarified before we, we actually move forward, because I think there's some understandings on the grade issues, and I think that's very important to understand first, that that's not an issue. And you take that off the table, then I think it's $300,000 well spent to get four more parking spaces out here. So total, you get, what, eight to 10 more parking spaces? Eight to 10 more parking spaces? How many parking spaces out here that are usable right now? You don't have anywhere near that.
Yeah.
So you're at least doubling the number of usable parking spaces, and when you have public meetings, people aren't parking as far on, on streets, they're parking closer to the Town Hall, people doing business during the day, they're around Town Hall. Four parking spaces seems minimal, but it's huge. It's absolutely huge. So that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah, and I also would just like to echo the sentiment that, that I often find myself parking in that, in that curved area, and wondering, I'm like, am I the only one who can't do this? I'll go back and forth 10 times, and I'll get out, and it's still not really in that spot. So, so we kind of, so we, we add four, eight more spaces, but also some of our spaces are not that easy to, to, you know, if there's a car parked on both ends, that, that little looped area is inaccessible. So we probably get, you know, maybe another half spot-ish out of that.
I've always seen one person do it in my 13 years here, it's been Mr. McCrisky, he's able to get right in the middle, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gino.
You bring up a very good point, and as did the town engineer, this space is very confined. When we do this project, it's basically going to be forever on this location. I think that when we think about being a MBTA community, community, and the development that's going to occur in the town, the fact that, that, that we are going to have accessible development units in many places in town, the population's going to increase a lot, and either we're going to have to find a different way of doing business with our citizens, or we're going to have to provide them the opportunity to get here. So I think that those, those additional spaces take on a larger value than we may see them now.
Thank you, yeah, and I, I think I agree, I definitely wanted to ask if, if the engineers agreed on that, that point as well, just to make sure I wasn't seeing something that, that, or you, you guys were seeing something that I wasn't. But I, for whatever it's worth, between the two, I, I agree, it's, it is better to spend the money now if it is going to be, in fact, forever, or, you know, practically forever, and do it right for opening up, opening things up. But I, you know, I know there's a lot of other stakeholders involved who might feel differently, but I have no other questions. Does anybody else on the board have any other questions? Okay. You might not have been done with your presentation, so if you would like to proceed, feel free if, are you guys ready to move on?
Mentioned one point on it, too, for the demo of the wall and a lot of the existing granite curbing and things like that, we're going to work with DPW, Craig and I will probably be out there every day, but they've been taking on some projects lately, you know, Western Plain Street, a few drainage projects, they really have capable crews over there to definitely do demo work. So we're going to work with them, and that's going to, we're going to value engineer that part of it, so that we can kind of take a lot of that work off the bid. But this point in time, we don't have those details, so the price reflect is as if we're going out for bid.
Sure, sure. And in your, just actually one further question is, in what you provided to us, I believe you had a calendar, but the calendar seemed to target special town meeting rather than the annual town meeting.
Yes, that's, that's incorrect.
Okay, so some of these things get pushed out a little bit further. And one thing I would ask is that, that, that town meeting will obviously have to weigh in on this, and with regard to, to, you know, improvements to Town Hall, landscaping, on-town facility, stuff like that, I, I could be mistaken, but I found it to be a little bit inconsistent, at least my prediction of what, which way they'll go on as, when they decide, I'm not able to predict it. So I can't say it's inconsistent as much as I just, I can't predict it. And, and so having, you know, I know you already had, you typically plan to have public hearings, but, but getting the buy-in of town meeting members early on, I think is advisable, I think ultimately it'll be their decision. And, you know, I want to help set this up for success, and if the appetite for the larger price tag isn't there, then it'd be good to know earlier on, so we can, we can, even though it might not be ideal, we can still get most of, of what we're looking for with the, the slightly smaller price tag.
You're right on point, Steve, we were going to have a public information hearing for the town meeting reps, and we were actually also going to do a public survey with the two options, with, with information that's shown tonight, and see what the general public has to say about what we've done. So when we come back to your board, you'll have a little more information. Again, tonight was just the first pass to kind of get, your major stakeholders getting your input. We've gotten great input with the bell thing was, was classic. We obviously need to do a little more homework with showing information about the grades and how, how that all lines up. So as we build this project, it'll get better and better as we answer every question. So if we put a public survey out, and we also do an informational session for town meeting reps, I feel like by the time we get to town meeting, it's been vetted as much as we possibly can at that point.
Yeah, I mean, just the last comment I'll make is that, you know, since, we'll be targeting a slightly different timeline on this, but, so I don't know if construction will be complete around our 300th anniversary, probably not.
Yeah, I'd have to look at that slide again.
I think if you have, if you went to the special town meeting, then construction would be complete July of 2026.
Yeah, so town meeting will say is, is May 2025. Yeah, so you're pushing everything off, construction complete July 2026, I think would still be the date, I believe. If town meeting 2025 approves it, we go off a bid within, say, two, two to three months after town meeting, we should have construction completed July, maybe we bump that back till September of 2026. It's still going to be done in 2026.
Yeah.
We'll have to refresh the schedule, it's obviously incorrect, we apologize for that.
No, it's okay.
But it's going to be roughly the same timeframe, it's just the date, couple dates in between. It's just the date, couple dates in between are off.
Sure, sure. Yeah. So I think they'll offer, if that were the case, they would offer us, you know, a really good opportunity to, to have this project wrapped up during a, you know, a major milestone for the community. Okay. Mr. Carrera.
I just have one comment, Mark, that if you're going to show stuff to town meeting, do yourself a favor and lighten up the trees so you can see the cars and the spaces underneath. You know, they're not going to understand because we know what we're looking for, but I wouldn't highlight the trees that way.
Good comment.
So if you have any more presentation, floor is yours.
We are, we are all set. We've gotten good feedback tonight. We'll build upon that. We'll, you'll see us, see us at a future date with some of the revisions once we get other public input.
Well, thank you very much. And also, you know, thank, you're, you're very consistent with the process you follow for these types of projects. And, and I can see a lot of value in it. I just want to tell you, I really appreciate you coming to us with a presentation, giving us a couple of options to look at, some things to think about and an opportunity to provide some feedback. So I thank you very much for, for going to the trouble of getting us clued in early on.
It's always, it's always a pleasure and we really want the town to take pride in this project and really, really enjoy what they see. If it doesn't come out right, we know, I won't be around too much longer after that. So I definitely want it to come out pretty good. I, I look at Stoughton as a, as a town that's given me opportunities to make fingerprints in life, which a lot of people don't have that opportunity. And we've constantly done that and I really appreciate, this is going to be one of those projects where all of you, the entire community can put a fingerprint on it and say, we were a part of that. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could, could I ask if you would be willing to have Mr. Tisdale stay around for just a second to talk about the, what is it? The natural hazard mitigation plan? Which is the very last thing on our agenda. I don't know anything about this.
Oh, item G on the consent agenda? Yeah, that'd be fine. Are you, are you able to speak to that right now?
Yeah, in general, yep. So item G on the consent agenda? Is there anything, can I start off now?
Yeah.
Okay.
All yours.
So we applied for a grant over a year ago to, for a regional hazard mitigation plan. The town didn't have one. What this does, about over a year ago, we applied for a grant. The engineering department did a regional grant with three, two other communities, Abington and Easton, sorry. We got the grant to perform a hazard mitigation plan. The goal of that is one, communities who have an approved hazard mitigation plan and put some general priorities in the plan, they're not, it's not usually a lot of detail. It's, it's bigger picture stuff. They're able to apply for other grants where you get funding to get into the details to accomplish some of those goals. So for example, some of the flooding issues we've had, not flooding issues, but some of the flooding studies we've had lately, as we've had a couple huge grants we landed in the last few years, some of the information from that we rolled into this. But we, we mentioned them in big picture ways where the flooding on, I'm just using a street, it doesn't mean there's flooding on it. The flooding on Porter Street is horrible in the 10-year storm. We need to do something about it. That goes in the hazard mitigation plan. We have all that information from other studies and plans. When we apply for a grant later for, I say, a culvert replacement grant, they'll say, you get bonus points if it's in your hazard mitigation plan. And that's the checkbox you need because it's, because you have an approved hazard mitigation plan. Most of the items in this plan, they usually come from the fire department. So kudos to our chief, Carol. He's kind of led the charge since we were able to land, land the grant. So he's the emergency management coordinator. It's a hazard mitigation plan. They get into things like, you know, electrical components, electricity through the town, you know, our power lines, flooding, emergency routes, things like that, which is things more geared towards the fire department in, in his perspective. I think he's on tonight. Is Mike? Oh.
I didn't even see you there, sorry.
I was going to go downstairs, but I was asked to stay.
All right.
Sorry about that. I didn't even see you there. Well, why don't you, why don't you carry? So we applied for a grant and then a lot of the components apply to engineering, but many of them apply to the fire department. So they've got more detail on that. Can you answer those questions?
That was, that was nice, Mark. Good evening. I, I presented to you and the importance of, and this is why I want to start here, is when we received the next step. This is a multi-jurisdictional grant. I can. This is a multi-jurisdictional grant. And as I presented in the initial letter, it was really a team effort. The engineering department applied for this with the towns of Abington, Easton, and also East Bridgewater, who for some reason, they kind of fell off. It is a lot of work. We had to dedicate to this. And so in 2015, I believe that Stoughton kind of was supposed to update it and did not. And it's important that we have this because this really sets us up for a lot of grant relief, whether it's a major storm, some sort of infrastructure breakdown, flooding. They covered a lot of wildlands or woods fires. But also, you know, even something as, as the hole in the center, right? How demolition of a building, the infrastructure and the impact it has. It covers Massachusetts laws and federal laws that as long as we have this plan, right? It really opens us up to receive FEMA relief, right? And MEMA relief, Massachusetts Emergency Management. So we worked very hard. We, we had multiple, multiple meetings, workshops with these other towns and getting on a, really a, I call it a regional grant. It's kind of how we do it in the fire service, but that's exactly what it is. All the towns got together and then kind of separated. So they pointed out, where are we having problems? Where are we, where could we be having problems? And this all goes through people, infrastructure, conservation, and a list of other things. And working with the engineering department, we were able to point out and pick out some potential hazards. And if, if it's a flooding or if it's a major storm or if it's a major fire that really knocks down either, whether it be, like I said, infrastructure or even other community things, we have to be able to have a plan in place. It really puts us, from what I've understood about this is puts us to the front of the line of receiving some money. And as you can tell, you know, even what just went through North Carolina, it's, it, the impact is real on, on not only the community, but the people in the community. So it was important, our next step, I think it even says in the initial email, if you are pending, which is where we're at now, and it's to you, the select board, to sign off so we can push this forward to the federal government and they will, and they've really done throughout the thing, check throughout the report and throughout this whole thing is checked off. Yes, we agree with this. Yes, we agree with this. Yes, we agree with it. Probably four or five times. Once approved by you and accepted, we move it forward and really opens us up again. We're checking the boxes on the federal laws and Massachusetts laws. And then hopefully, you know, as accepted will be in place for grants should, and God forbid, anything really does happen, but if it does, we're there. We set ourselves up good. Sure. You can do the chair here.
We're supposed to sign a certificate of adoption. It says right in here that there's a public meeting was held on a date that is to be determined. I mean, should we, should we wait a week or two? Should you have that public hearing? Is there, I mean, it's kind of crazy. Look, I'm not trying to be critical, but I haven't seen this at all. And.
I understand that, Mr. Gito. What, the way it was presented through email to me or to us, I should say.
From whom?
From, well, Beta, was it Beta that we hired? Yeah, the consultant forwarded it. And I'm just pulling it up. It's the last step. So yes, through the consultant was to have the, the select board or government, local government body approve this as, as its approval pending adoption are not eligible for FEMA mitigation grant programs. So we just wanted to get to the next step. It also multiple times said ASAP. That's why I believe, you know, I sent it to Gilda and I'm like, can we get this on so we can move it to the next step as accepting? I did not want to inundate you in a short time, and I believe it was last week that I got this and I wanted to move it forward was the 150-page report. And I, and I'd be more than willing to. I was really about getting this out and having it done. That, they gave us there was a sample. I'm sorry, I pulled it up. Apologize. What paragraph are you looking at?
So it's the third to last. It says, whereas a duly notified remote public meeting was held by the select board on TBD for the public and municipality to review the Stoughton, Massachusetts Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan 2023 prior to consideration of this resolution.
Yeah, I apologize. It looks like.
I mean, we would look kind of silly.
I, I agree with you. We can hold a public meeting. I, like, I was, you know, Mark called me this, this afternoon. When I did this, they just said, you know, here is a sample to set forth, put your town seal up top. But I'd be more than happy to have and present a better presentation. I apologize. I've been at, I was in Easton at the fire since 3:30 in the morning and I haven't stopped. So I'm a little.
This, this isn't a gotcha thing. It really isn't.
What's that?
I said, I'm not trying to play gotcha or anything like that.
I don't feel like you play gotcha. Honestly, I saw this, they asked us to move it forward. I think I reached out to Mark. He said, yeah, see if you can get on their next agenda, we can check that box and send it forth. But if it's presenting us this, let's have an open meeting. It doesn't, it doesn't faze me either way. I was just trying to follow the steps and I probably should have read it a little bit better.
Well, maybe. I, I would say we should do that, but maybe that's just me.
No, I, I tend to agree. I mean, unfortunately, we'll, we'll be voting on something that we, saying that we are going to do something we didn't do.
And I, and I apologize. It even says 2023. I mean, I'm about a year behind anyway, so.
Yeah. But we can, you know, either schedule this for the, the next meeting, it'll be the first meeting in November. If you need it expedited, we can, we can meet next week and have this, be the only item on the agenda. We can discuss that, the scheduling of it. I'll make sure that members are available depending on that.
And I apologize. I think this was the idea for this, from what I'm reading this, right? This was supposed to be the select board meeting 2024, review it, open me, you know, and discuss.
Perfect. So yeah, well, well, thank you for providing, does anybody have any other questions about it right now? Because it sounds like we'll have another bite of the apple.
And I'll make sure everybody has a copy of it. Yeah, we'll put it, should we put it on the website now? And, okay. So that everybody will have it? Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes. Thank you very much for helping us understand the context and, and we'll schedule that. I'll, I'll get in touch with you and we'll schedule something as quick as possible.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chief.
I will. Thank you. Sorry. And I apologize again.
No, no, no need to apologize. I appreciate all the hard work.
It was, it was the middle, in the middle of our own Freeman Street flood.
Yeah. While you guys were, you know, kayaking out of the, at Station One.
Yeah, that whitewater rafting out of Bay 5 was great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to take it back up to the, to the top. And the next item is item number three. We're a little bit behind, maybe about, about an hour, but a couple of things are going to fall off. So we have the public hearing, we have three public hearings, as is our operating model. Our vice chair, Carrera, has a lot of exposure and experience with public hearings. He'll be leading these public hearings. And for that time period, while he's leading those public hearings, he's the acting chair. So all comments should be directed through and to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being where it's eight o'clock. A public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on October 15, 2024, at 8:00 PM to consider the application of Cafe Toma Toma located at 458 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. O2072 for Carmen Victo's license. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. And/or virtually and via Google meets and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and live stream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for the public comment available by calling the select board office at 781-341-1300, extension 921, or emailed to gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov. Could I have a motion to open hearing?
Will made.
Second.
Joe. Deborah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Meeting's open. Would you like to introduce yourselves, please?
Yes, I am George Frandudo Lopez.
Talk, put that on green. There you go.
Sorry, I'm George Frandudo Lopez. This is my wife Cynthia. We've been in Stoughton for about 16 years now and we wanted to make a coffee shop. So we ended up being with Pages. We're connected to them, which is very convenient for everyone. And we just look forward to bringing the best coffee and the best pastries in town.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to read the information from the department heads, then I'll turn it back over to you. You can present it a little more, then I'll put the questions through, if anybody has anything up here, all right?
Terrific. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we have a, a business contract information filled out. We have the application for the Carmen Victo's license that states that there's going to be no stove, right? It says not available. Are you going to put one in?
No, sir. I don't use a stove, but I do use pages.
Okay, I see.
I use all of them.
Right. Okay. It's table seating for 12, total capacity of 12?
Yes, sir. 12 it is.
Okay. Operation of hours is going to be 5:30 AM to 9:00 PM. There is dumpsters available at the place, then there's a men's, a men's restroom and a women's restroom, and it's ADA.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'll just move up. We have a seating plan that was provided, if everybody saw it. Now I'll go into the department correspondence. From Assistant Chief Jack Maycomber, the fire department has no, no problems. It's been approved through. Now I'll go into the department correspondence. From Assistant Chief Jack Maycomba, the Fire Department has no, no problems. It's been approved through them. From Chief Donna McNamara, we have a letter and the Police Department has approved theirs. Border Health, hang on. Border Health, from Larry Perry. He's got some restrictions. Have you been told from Border Health about the restrictions?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
The only restrictions, it looks like he's commenting on a limited menu and the seating will not be over 12.
Yes, sir, absolutely, no more than 12.
Okay. There's a question on the, on the septic records haven't been provided yet, but I think they'll be able to get them. Jack Erickson from Building and Zoning has approved. Treasurer's Office, Trisicardoza, no objections from Treasurers. Department of Water and Sewer, Anna, approved. And we have record of the newspaper ad and the, Abada's notifications went out. Okay, George, tell us a little more about what you're doing, then I'll open it up to my, my members and they'll probably have a couple of questions from you.
My new hours are probably going to be from 7 to 3 right now, but as it gets more and more and it starts to get nice out, we'll be able to stay out longer. We want to improve the outside also at some point, do some outside.
What I, what I recommend is go with what you got here.
Yep.
And if you don't open at that time, there's no penalty.
Oh, great.
But if you wanted to, you know, go with the new hours and then you wanted to open earlier and stay later, you wouldn't be able to because you'd be locked in.
Okay, then.
So stick with this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
I usually go there around 5:00 in the morning and start my baking and everything. Try to do everything ready by 7:00. And I'm usually open from 7:00 to move along.
I'm sorry, sir, just before you go on, would you just press the button, turn the on button? You only have to hit it once.
Just, yeah, there you go. Green.
Technology, I want an old register.
It's no problem.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sorry. Other than that, we just really like to bring a nice coffee shop. The community likes what we're doing now. We're getting a great reception. Sorry? Oh, and we're going to be serving expressos, cappuccinos. I do make fresh pastries, chocolate croissants, flat chocolate croissants with cookie. I brought some samples there, some blueberry muffins, cranberry muffins. So acai, we're going to be serving acai also. They're the key. She knows it all. And refreshers, lemonade refreshers. Again, we've got a lot of kids that are starting to come in, which is nice, and we're starting to get a good review from the community. And a lot of grab and go. Sorry.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Anybody on the board like to speak up, ask any questions? Mr. Gito? I have no questions. Ms. Roberts?
I have no questions. I'm in favor of this one. He said chocolate croissants. I said, oh, okay. With coffee.
You're here.
Dipped fresh every morning.
Joe, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just a comment. You know, for years I've been sitting here and the different entities that come through the doors at Pages Variety is that Jerry's continuing to keep the place fresh, new ideas, trying new things, you know, to adapt to the neighborhood, keep all the business local. It's a great thing. Good luck, and I look forward to voting yes for you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Chairman, Steve?
Thank you. Yeah, so first of all, thanks for picking Stoughton as a place that sounds like both live and also operate a business out of. So we're very appreciative that you're, you're looking to, to open a business in Stoughton. And this is an exciting, exciting business. I'm always looking for new places to go to breakfast and it'd be a great, great opportunity to bring people, you know, to meet up with people, friends, or to do business over there and sit down, have a coffee and pastry and chat about what's going on in the town. So I'm looking forward to it. I live not far away, so.
Terrific.
I'll be by.
Great, great. We look forward to it.
The question I have is, is about the menu. I want to know, you know, what are some of your specialties? What are some of the things that you recommend people if they're going to come there?
I think one of our biggest things is our cookie croissant, which is basically a flattened croissant. I bake it in the morning, then I'll flatten it, then I'll get cookie, chocolate chip cookie dough, put it on top of it, re-bake it, and then ganache it with chocolate ganache. We also have a top-of-the-line espresso machine that'll always make consistent coffee, cappuccinos, lattes, consistent every single time. Our vendors are local, they're not very far. Our coffee vendor's out of Denham, which is a great guy. As soon as he gets his coffee, he sends it right over as fresh as possible. So we're trying to do something nice and we have a great rapport with all our vendors. And we really are looking forward to this new endeavor that we have in East Boston here. I'm sorry, we came from East Boston, sorry. Here in Stoughton. We've been here 16 years and we look forward to a great time. And we, oh, oh, our new special thing is a strawberry Bavarian croissant. I'll bake it fresh croissant, cut it open, put in fresh strawberries, and fill it with Bavarian cream. Our blueberries, you break it open and there's fresh giant blueberries in there. I like a nice blueberry and cranberry muffin. Other than that, I think that, did I cover everything? Great. I got to double check. And we also have teas that we're going to be serving.
Refresher drinks for the kids.
Yeah, the refresher drinks.
Very family, we're very family oriented.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And we're serving pup cups, something new I didn't know about, which is people come with their pups and we give them whipped cream in a little cup and I guess the dogs love it. So it's one of my favorites to be able to make the pups happy.
Apparently I picked the wrong week to go on a diet, but I
I won't say anything. If you don't say anything, I'll be more than happy to keep it a secret.
I'll have to jog there and jog back. But it sounds, it sounds wonderful. I have no further questions. And once again, thank you very much. Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to say that Larry Perry came in late this afternoon and he brought the Form 4 of the pumping record that states that the system was pumped yesterday, October 14th. The grease trap was pumped by Wind River Environmental Solar Energies.
So that's what they I knew, I knew that, but I wasn't going to say anything until I had hot coffee. That's why I said I didn't have a problem with it.
I'm sorry, I actually stood there when they were doing it two days ago. So I was like, okay, this is a good thing. Good sign.
So thank you again for, for picking Stoughton and best of luck to you. I'm obviously very much in favor of this, so.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. And again, everyone's welcome and we look forward to having a great time.
Okay, just wait one minute now. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to have something to say? Either on, online or in the audience? I don't see anything. I'll entertain a motion to close?
So made.
I have a motion to close. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's the wish of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second from Joe and Lou. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, best of luck.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, item 3B is Juanita Restaurant, Inc., 577 Washington Street. And it's for a change of manager. We have business contact information. We have an application. Is there anybody here from Juanita Restaurant? Are you online?
There's, there's, nobody, I said, there's no Antonio Souza. There's no Antonio Souza online. So I make a motion to continue the public hearing until November 6th, which is
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Hang on one second. Motion to continue. What'd you say?
So our next meeting would typically be November 5th, but that is Election Day. And so I assume we're going to meet on November 6th, the day after. That's a Wednesday. And if we need a time, sir, and I'll say 8:00 PM on Wednesday, November 6th.
Excellent. Thank you. That's where it lies.
The motion was made and seconded, but did we vote for it?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Lou made the motion and then we voted at 5:00.
I spaced, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I may not be at the meeting.
Sorry?
I may not be at the meeting on the 6th.
Okay, thank you. We'll try to keep it light then.
All right, the next application for public hearing is Class 2 license, 1305 Washington Street, gentlemen, comp. Mr. Chairman, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on October 15, 2024, at 8:00 PM to consider the application of Huggett &amp; Ewing Automotive LLC for a Class 2 license located at 1305 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. And Vega Google meets may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Livestream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for the public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov. I'll entertain a motion to open this hearing.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, gentlemen, want to introduce yourself?
Yes, good evening. My name's Chris O'Neil. Alongside of Ona Taken, we are here tonight to apply for a Class 2 dealer's license.
I'm going to read some correspondence, then I'll turn it back over to you guys to tell us what you're going to do, and then questions will be taken from here.
Very good.
We have the business contact information sheet filled out by Ona Taken. And we have the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the application filled out for the Class 2. They have provided us with their workman's comp information. And I'm going to read the correspondence from our department heads. From the Assistant Chief Maycomba, they have approved it. From the Police Department, Chief Donna McNamara put a letter and it was approved, no problems. Border Health, approved with recommendation, recommended restrictions. The onsite septic system has been in failure since 2022. In the, in past state, it has passed the state two-year deadline for repair. The Border Health has granted a 90-day extension, one and a half months ago, to previous state and local repair deadlines. Provided H&amp;E to install a tight tank and a plan has been approved and a permit is ready to be issued prior to extended deadline of 11/8/2024. And I'll have something to say after I finish the rest to, to add to it. Building and zoning, Jack Erickson has approved it. Treasurer's Office has no problems that they have approved and cleared it. And the Water Department has an approval, there's no outstanding water. Their ads and Abada's notifications have been sent. Now, I want to inform the board that I spoke to the Border Health and these gentlemen said they were going to put in a tight tank, which starts a process of a sewer hookup that you guys talked about.
Correct.
And it's going to take a while to put it together, I understand, but he wants to have monthly updates on, it's going to be part of this if it passes, and he wants to be kept abreast of how it's going because it's kind of fallen off. And he doesn't want this to fall off because it's in violation right now. I know that and he told me that. So I just want you guys to be aware of that.
Understood, yep.
All right. Go ahead and present your side.
Yes, so Huggett &amp; Ewing, as many of you might know, is a longstanding automobile dealership service center here in town. I am a third-generation owner of the dealership. Earl Ewing was my grandfather. And I'm very proud of what we have done here for the community. And I'd like to present tonight the opportunity to develop a strategic partnership with the individuals on the application to be able to continue to offer the community what we've done for 73 years. I myself, alongside with my business partner, Chris Jender, will stay on this entity to ensure that this, this will comply and stay with the standards that we've exemplified over the years. So I really just want to drive home that, you know, nothing is going to change. The use will not change. And we're not even changing the name. So we're going to continue to run it as Huggett &amp; Ewing. This is more of a, you know, we're bringing on some, bringing on some investors to be able to continue to do what we've always done.
Are there any questions from the board? Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Again, just not, not questions, but compliments is, I knew personally, my family had done business with Huggett &amp; Ewing dating back to 1950, and I never realized that it adds up to 74 years.
Joe, could you put the, pull that a little closer to you? It's my ears.
How's that, better?
So far.
How about that?
That's
There we go. Going to be, I'm going to start my mouth in a minute. No, and I had some reservations. I spoke with Mr. O'Neil and I had some reservations. I'm reading this because, as we all know, for some reason, we're becoming the used car capital of Metro South. And some of these locations, you know, really don't bring value, in my opinion, you know, to the area. So I had some questions and they were just squashed when Chris said, oh, no, no. We're just taking on a partner. We're going to be active. You're not going to see any changes. We're still going to conduct business the way we did. And that was fleeting right away because I don't know of anyone when it comes to used car dealerships that has not had somebody unhappy or, you know, might call us once in a while over issues. I've sure gotten the calls in the past, but never one out of Huggins and Ewing. I think that your partners or your partner has some big shoes to fill. And he may regret when he gets in as to how you folks run your business. So I am, I am pleased to speak on your behalf. Again, you're what makes Stoughton. Your business is what makes Stoughton what it is.
Thank you.
It supports the community. I can't recall the, and I'll say, years back, Mr. Huggins, I approached him for a Stoughton resident woman who was having some financial problems trying to raise her family, her two kids on her own, and somebody slashed her tires. And I went to Jeff and I said, this is this woman's problem. Could you help out with a set of old tires or something, you know, that we can get mounted onto her car? He asked me for her information, which I gave him. He sent a ramp truck to her house, picked up the car. I don't think I've told you this one, did I?
No.
He picked up the car on the ramp truck, brought it to the dealership, put four brand-new tires on it, gave her $100 gas card and returned the car to her. And now, you know, when you talk about making a difference in your community, that's what it's all about. So you and your partners, and you've got some big shoes to fill, boy. I'll tell you. And that's the legacy that I see with Huggins and Ewing.
Thank you.
It's nice when you can sit on this board and be able to say things positive about a business. As I said in the previous as well with Paige's Variety is, you know, I look forward to voting yes for this. You take any fears that I had away, just knowing that you're going to be there and that you're going to continue what you've done for 73 years.
Thank you.
Good luck to both of you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. G.
Okay.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I'll be brief. First of all, you know, I am in favor of this. I'm grateful for the term of service that you've provided the town as a local business. And, you know, I'm always happy to see new folks coming in and taking advantage of what Stoughton has to offer our business folks. But I do have just a couple of quick questions. These are just, should be some softballs. The license that you're looking to get this, sorry, the business name that you're looking to get this under is Huggins and Ewing Automotive LLC.
Correct.
This is a new license. So there was a separate entity that existed. I'm assuming that it was dissolved?
So Huggins and Ewing, Inc., you know, still, it's not completely dissolved. It still exists as far as the Commonwealth is concerned. If this is granted, then it will be, it will no longer exist.
Okay. So then it will be Huggins and Ewing Automotive LLC doing business as. And that's what you're looking to?
Correct, yes.
Put this under. And so before I could tell, there's only, I think, only one additional partner being added on to that, or are there others?
Yeah, so currently it's myself and Chris Gendrow.
Yeah.
Then we have Mr. Taken and then Farad Al Q would be. So there'd be four of us total.
Four total, okay. I appreciate it. Whoever filled out the application, your handwriting is unbelievable.
Thanks.
I'm jealous. I can actually read this. I can't even read my own. So, so well done. But we're not going to grade you on your penmanship, but it was excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
But thank you very much for your commitment to the community. And I look forward to voting yes on this. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I look forward to voting in favor of this and also you continuing your legacy.
Thank you, Deborah. Thank you very much.
I have some questions for the person who is going to run the business as Huggins and Ewing Automotive LLC. Are you Mr. Farad?
No, I am not. My name is Ona Taken.
And you are the co-owner with Mr. Farad?
Yes.
What is your experience in this business?
I've been doing this business for a long time.
Where?
In Stoughton.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have been doing this business, so we decided to.
You were down the street?
Yes. We are on the same street. So we decided to make like partnership with the Chris O'Neil, with the Huggins and Ewing because it's been known since 1951. So it's a great opportunity to grow up in this sector.
Yeah, they're also, we're tenants of ours at the old Saul Atlas Building at 1450 Washington Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you have been managing repair operations as well as sales?
We are doing sales at the Platinum and we will fix some like repairing and something at the Huggins and Ewing because they have a facility for this.
The reason I'm asking the questions, I'm sorry that I didn't recognize you from the other, other location, is that Huggins and Ewing was a sort of a mainstay in the town and a place where people could go and get good service and a reasonably priced automobile that was in good shape. And I want to make sure that that quality of work is maintained.
Mr. G, if I may?
As Mr. McCrisky said earlier, there are a lot of other places selling used cars in town. And I would rather that you replicate what had been there than some of the, some of the things that are not quite so good because the town deserves that kind of service. And I would be very disappointed if that doesn't occur. So I just mentioned that to you. And you were going to say something, Mr.?
Yes, if I may. That is completely, the entire reason why I have chosen to stay on is to ensure that we offer the same quality service to our community.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I noticed that your lease agreement goes up from the first year by 25% and then by 20% of that in the third year, in the second year.
Third year. Third through five, yeah.
Yeah. From 24 to 30 to 36 hundred thousand dollars. And I guess I'm just making sure that we're not having a Stewart Medical issue here, you know? I'm sure we're not. It's not an REIT kind of a deal. You're just dealing with, with what you're dealing with. And I'm going to have to take your word for that.
Thank you, sir.
It's a pretty steep change from one year to the next to the next. I'll bet there's a reason for that.
Well, that was the agreement we all agreed upon and we look forward to executing it.
I hope it doesn't put the other gentleman in a bind, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Seems better now, I guess. All right. So what I'm led to believe is you're, you're part of the LLC.
Yes, sir.
With these guys, you're all in.
Correct.
It says on, on your agreement, on section 37, Class II Used Car Dealer License, it says, "The license run with the premises and shall be returned in good standing."
So we amended, I don't know if you have that here with you tonight, but there was an amendment to the.
Did you change that? Because the license goes with the company. It doesn't go with the property.
Understood, yes.
That's how I learned it in zoning. That's the only thing I was going to point out to you guys. So if you've changed it.
Yes.
So that, then that's not an issue then.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that would have hung this up because the license doesn't go with the property. You can't like say, I'm going to sell BJ's and all that stuff. The lead company is, that's why I didn't know if you were still in, you know? And if you weren't, then you would have had to become part owner so you can hang on to the license, so.
Right, so, yeah, we amended that, thank you.
Good, good, thank you. And I do have, and Jilda's going to give you a copy of this. This is the, the letter. It's, it's new, it's made today. And I asked for it so that people, you guys would understand better what he's asking for, all right?
Okay, thank you.
So that'll be attached to, if it's approval tonight, then that goes with it. It goes in there and you have to adhere to what's going on here because it's, it's state stuff, you know what I mean?
Absolutely, yes.
You know what I mean? That's all I want to, I wanted to point out to you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. So is there anybody in the audience? Is there any more questions from the board? Everybody sat? Is there any questions from people in the audience? Online? I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion from Joe and a second from the Chairman Steve. All in favor of closing?
Aye.
It's a 5-0. What's the wish of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, Mr. McCrisky, second from Chairman Cavey. All those in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Good luck to everyone, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Now you can start another generation.
Thank you.
Well, once again, Mr. Carrera, Vice Chair Carrera, well done. And I appreciate your, your assistance during the public hearings. The next item on our agenda is, this is the 300th Anniversary Committee. There's an update. I don't believe there's a member from that committee online or present. And so we'll move this to our next meeting. So the next item is Select Board Comments. And for this, I'm going to start, actually, if it's okay, with Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jilda, can you help me out? Could you post that first picture that I asked you to post, please? Thank you so much. It's with a heavy heart that we have to do these things, but it's definitely, we should do these, is announce the passing of a very, very dear friend of ours in the town of Stoughton, Sharon Fradkin. Sharon is the wife of Steve Fradkin, who has been a staple in Stoughton. And I'll read this on Friday, October 11th, 2024. Sharon M. Fradkin of Stoughton in Delray Beach, Florida. Loving wife, mother, grandmother, sister and friend passed away peacefully after a complication from a chronic illness. Sharon is preceded in death by her parents, Mildred and Daniel Cohen. She is survived by her husband Steve, two children and their spouses, Michael and Debbie Fradkin, Robin and Marsha Matthews, her three grandchildren, Alex, Ethan and Asher, and the two sisters and their spouses, Arlene Patterson and Marty Cohen and Roberta and Harry Zeisman. Sharon was born in Columbus, Ohio in 1944, where her father Daniel was stationed in the Navy. Her mother Mildred returned to Boston with infant Sharon shortly after his deployment to Korea, and Sharon spent her young childhood in Roxbury, Mass. On Labor Day, we're jumping forward a little bit. On Labor Day weekend, 1963, Sharon found her friend and took a spur-of-the-moment weekend trip to Cape Cod, where she, where Steve was entertaining with his band. Sharon caught Steve's eye and thus began the courtship that included calls, visits, letters and a lot of laughter. Their 58-year marriage included a share of love of politics, comedy, music, close friendships, growing a business, supporting the interests and hobbies of their children and grandchildren, and a mutual affinity for the dark chocolate and ice cream. In addition to a treasured family, Sharon also had veritable legions of friends, collecting them wherever she went and building deep, long-lasting relationships. And when a friend was in need, she was the first to run over the container of homemade soup or offer to help. It is often said that Sharon knew everyone and everyone knew her. She was a founder of the Stoughton, Mass. chapter of the League of Women Voters, co-owned an advertising agency with her husband Steve, chaired the Chamber of Commerce, worked to help fund the new Stoughton Public Library, was instrumental in development of the local farmer's market, hosted cable TV cooking shows and worked closely with educators and administrators on kids voting, curricular civics program at the public schools. She also made friends with strangers everywhere she went. Sharon spent a lifetime making the world a better place. She was deeply cherished and we profoundly missed. She has made an indelible contribution to the town of Stoughton and will always be remembered as a person who made a difference in making our town a better place to live. Rest in peace, our dear friend. And I got to say, on a personal note, I knew Steve and Sharon for a lot of years. Steve and Sharon, in my early years of politics, put together this advertisement for me and was a part of my campaign and truly were the type of people that I listened to more than talked to and learned quite a bit. So on behalf of our board, the residents of Stoughton, I pass our condolences to the family of Sharon Fradkin, her husband Steve, that we are all sharing with you the grief of losing such a beautiful person who has made just numerous, numerous contributions to our town. Jilda, the second photo. Thank you. There is a photo of a few people that you may know. I'm in the middle with a selfie. To my right is retired police officer, Robert Bond. To my left, retired police officer Frank Pallucci. And unfortunately, this morning, I read a post that our good friend Frank Pallucci passed away. He was in the Marine Corps from 1960 to 1964. In Stoughton, he was hired on September 11th, 1967 as a provisional police officer. He went to full-time status in 1967 as a patrol officer. He worked in domestic violence and was very passionate in his field, especially toward the end of his career. There were many letters of commendation in his file, especially for work in the field of domestic violence and assisting victims. He became a detective in 1977 and ran many fingerprint clinics within the town. Appointed to a provisional sergeant in, I'm sorry, September of 1988 and then went back to a patrol officer. He retired on July 18th, 2024. So it, it's, it's great that Frank was able to have some good years of retirement, but still, as we say, too young. And he, again, is, a brief time in my life, back in the 70s, 80s, I spent quite a few years as an auxiliary police officer. I thought law enforcement was going to be my future. And it was because of those two gentlemen there that in my life growing up, I really didn't have a dad. I had my mother that raised us. And I've, to this day, find leadership. And I, to this day, find leadership and things about people that I want to mirror. These are the two guys that I wanted to be like when I thought I was going to be in law enforcement. And to this day, you know, I still admire them. I listen more than I talk, which is something for me. But again, we couldn't have lost a greater human being. His last post on Facebook, he was asking for a prayer group to remember all the people in Florida that are struggling and have passed away. He was always, to the day he died, thinking of helping other people, which is no more noble a cause. And to top all, in his military career, I came across a picture of his that he posted on Facebook. Jilda, could you put the last picture up? Thank you. Look at that picture. He was a fighter pilot in Vietnam. Tell me Tom Cruise doesn't have anything on this guy. That is a picture to be remembered. I just, you know, that's how, although we all age, I used to say to Frank all the time, "Man, that is like, gotta be the greatest picture I've seen of a veteran." I know some veterans over the years that, you know, he'd done some miraculous things. You know, everything, you know, my own father-in-law was in Patton's 3rd Army. He told me all these things that he did, and I was in awe. But he never had a picture like this to back it up, you know? So that's the way I'm going to remember my friend Frank. And again, on behalf of the residents of our town, our board, and I believe I can speak for my colleagues, that we wish our most sincere condolences to Frank Pallucci's family and friends. And at this time, I would ask that we stand and just take one moment of silence for Sharon Fradkin and Francis Pallucci. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCrisky, do you have any further comments?
I do, Mr. Chairman. And I'm going to read because if I don't read it, I know about it, but if I don't read it, I'm going to miss something. Mr. Chairman, we have had some great accomplishments in the past few years. Our board, working with our staff, presentation that was here tonight, you know, where that, we're doing things. And we also always stay cognizant of, you know, controlling costs, try to do more with less, but to bring more money into the town, you know, to hopefully decrease the need for revenues being placed over to the taxpayers. We've done that, and we'll talk more about that in days to come. But this one is a great one. We know, and many of you have been here for years, and we've talked about the renovation of the train station. What are we doing with the train station? We've talked about everything. We've tried to repurpose it, we've tried to put it out to bid, we've tried to have somebody lease the building, put the money into it. We have beat this horse beyond death, you know, and we revived it and then beat it again. And we started a couple of years back, and I was honored, the town manager had asked me to lead this on his behalf, that we, and I'm going to read this now, is, "Under the direction of the town manager, Tom Calder, the economic development director Pamela McCarthy, applied for a grant to the state's One Stop for Community Growth Mass Works Infrastructure Program. On October 11th, the town was notified by a letter from the Secretary of Economic Development, Yvonne Howe, that the entire request in the amount of $2 million has been awarded for the conversion of the former train station to the new Stoughton Community Center. Since the depot was purchased from the MBTA in 2019, a great deal of effort has been put into funding the rehab of this building. Multiple smaller grants and earmarks have been provided and have allowed us, the town, to start the process to secure the building." And I'll stop there and say, as you know, many of you know, we did get the water in, we've got a gas meter in, so we have actual heat in the building to protect it. We've enclosed some of the windows, but that's just a quick repair, much more needs to be done. We've made some minor adjustments to the floor so they're not a trip hazard and so forth. But, and the Community Preservation Act Committee, with the support of the town meeting, also contributed a significant amount of money to purchase and rehab the building. The select board voted in 2023 to designate the train station as a community center. Town manager Tom Calder appointed myself, Select Board McCrisky, to lead the project and the construction. Working with a consultant provided by Mass Downtown Initiative Grant, Pamela McCarthy conducted the highest use, best use study of the building that included the community survey and the community supported this use. The Mass Works grant will make it possible for the town to complete the rehab work necessary to make the building safe and usable, allowing it to be transformed into a multi-use community center. This use will provide the opportunity for Stoughton residents and visitors to attend art and historical exhibits, performances, and special events. Longtime residents will once again be able to enjoy this beloved historical building. New and younger residents who only know the building as an abandoned structure will be able to enjoy the space for the first time. This depot conversion project will go a long way towards accomplishing the master plan's number-one economic development goal of downtown revitalization. The town is so grateful for the support shown by the Healy Driscoll administration that made this grant possible. So I am proud, honored to be a part of this project. But I would say, Mr. Town Manager, to you, your staff, and the leadership you've provided in this town since you've been here, thank you. You have jump-started so many projects and really been the linch key of getting this town working together instead of against each other, which we've done for years. So thank you to you and your staff as well, Mr. Town Manager. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
Just wanted to amplify that. I, so, I know everyone's got a chance to speak, but I do want to say that I was sort of newly on the board, probably for about a year, when we purchased the building. I know a former select board member, Mike Sullivan, had a lot, he was on the ground negotiating that and, you know, I think it took years off of his life to get that negotiation.
All of our lives.
Yeah. But once that was done, you know, I do have to say, I just want to sort of take a trip down memory lane and say that it was, we weren't sure what we wanted to do with it. I knew that there's two things that mattered to me. One is, I want to make sure the building was preserved and protected. And then the second most important thing to me was that it be activated and used by the public. How exactly, I wasn't sure, you know, I was willing to listen to a lot of opinions, and there are a lot of people who had ideas. And you were the first to recommend a community center, at least to me. And ultimately, at the first, I wasn't quite sure, the more I thought about it, you know, literally over years, the more it seemed like really the only thing, the only appropriate choice. And so I just wanted to, you know, thank you for, from the beginning, seeing the potential there for it and the potential use for the town. And I agree with, you know, few people will be aware of the sort of, the work that Mr. Calder has done to make this possible, has really moved mountains. And he's done that with the help of wonderful staff. But without him as the coxswain, essentially telling people what to, you know, where to row, we wouldn't have gotten there. This wasn't something that happened by accident, it was tremendous amount of work. And both of you have contributed mightily to it, so I just want to thank you both for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I concur, I concur with Chairman Kayvey. I remember last year, in December, when I wanted to have the, I'm dreaming of a white Christmas event at the station, and you all were all in favor, and the things that you did to make that happen. And now that I see the grant funding coming to fruition, you know, it just makes my heart feel with joy. So thank you, Mr. McCrisky, and thank you, Mr. Calder.
Thank you, Depper.
Thank you. So we'll move on with that.
So I, I sort of spoke out of turn when I said, "Thank you, Joe." But let me do it formally. Joe and Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you, all.
Mr. Chairman, just a word?
Sure, of course.
If I may, I think Joe's being a bit humble. I want to share with all of you a plan that Joe laid out early on, probably my first week here. And he talked about the community center, the dream of a community center. And we're not talking about a refurbished building. We're talking about a state-of-the-art wedding-type venue that will be absolutely gorgeous. And Joe laid out a plan in the very beginning. He said, "We have to first secure the building." Because nobody's going to lend us any money on a bill that's deteriorating, on a building that's deteriorating every single day. And with Joe's leadership, the heat was put back on, the gas was put back into the building. Some floors were nailed down, as he said, so nobody tripped. We were able to host, from Depper's leadership, the Christmas show there. And that's the first time I saw it in 40 years, since I picked my wife up there every night after she got off the train from Boston. And we started dreaming about state and federal money. And I'll tell you where it is today. Joe and I went in to see the staff and the administration, and we demanded that we get $2 million as, because we have been good soldiers in terms of being a great community to migrants who moved into our community. And that, and we took some heat for that. But how could they expect us to try and be a good host community, and Joe helped make this argument, if we don't even have a community center? And so we asked for the $2 million. Joe and I had known for a month that we got it, but couldn't announce it until they notified us on Saturday. But the journey continues. On Friday, I'm flying to Washington to meet with the congressman's office because we, Joe and I, put $2 million in the earmark of the federal FY26 budget. And we've kept the pressure on both the state administration, where you could hear Joe talk loudly in the hallways at the State House, to the Capitol, which I will talk loudly in the hallways on Friday. Stoughton is getting the advocacy it has always deserved. And so we don't need, I shouldn't say it this way, with $4 million to finish this project, this will be a place that'll be the palace on the hill throughout the salt shore for a community center. It's got both character, it's got history, it will have elegance, it will have functioning fireplaces, it'll have beautiful windows and a modern-day HVAC, the roof is new already. The windows, in collaboration with the Historical Commission of the Commonwealth, will be refurbished and replaced, just like the doors. A year, maybe a little bit later, a year from now, we'll have a great celebration there. I'm hoping we can have our Christmas party there next year. And the Stoughton community, I think, will be very, very pleased. So I too want to join you in thanking Joe for his leadership. Without his energy and vision, we wouldn't be where we are today. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you so much. Mr. Carrera, do you have any comments? No comments?
Everybody said it all.
So since we're still on select board comments, do you have any unrelated comments? This is item five.
Yeah. When we do the budget guidelines, I have a, I have a motion, which is similar to last year's motion. If everybody remembers that we voted to lower the levy, and I was waiting for some information so that the money would be put into excess capacity, because I couldn't remember that word, and it got absorbed. But it was a vote of the board, and we didn't change our vote, so the money got absorbed. I don't, I don't know how it does that when we did it. But I'll be making another motion, because it's the only time of the year we can do this, is this time. And we did it last year on the 18th, so we have a meeting tonight, and I want to put another one forward to help. But if it's proper to do it at that time, I will, instead of on the select board comments, if...
I will be seconding that.
Definitely. Ms. Roberts?
Yes, this is regarding the Frederick Richards Key to the Town of Stoughton. I wanted to thank my fellow select board members, Mr. Gito, Chairman Kayvey, Mr. Carrera, Vice Chair Carrera, and Mr. McCrisky, Town Manager Calder, and all of the staff on the school side, Dr. Baeda, all of his staff, for helping plan and execute a really nice event that the community enjoyed. It was a wonderful event, everyone had a great time. And just thank you, thank you for working with me to make that happen.
It was, it was exceptional. The event was great, and, and not only did it go well, but it was, it was a ton of fun. Really a testament to your ability to whip everybody up into a frenzy. So we had a great time, I had a great time, and I thank you very much for putting all that work in.
Depper, I apologize for not being there. I know you called me, but my wife had something with her family because when Iran passed away, they weren't able to be there, so we had to be with them. But I did see him speak on TV, on the news, and you could hear it in his voice, how happy he was, how proud he was to be from Stoughton, and how he was looking forward to helping the kids. And it wasn't just one of those, "Oh, I'm going to read it because I'll be someplace else," you know? But he meant that, you could see he meant that, that was good. He was like, happy to be home for a short time, I'm sure.
I agree with that.
Mr. McCrisky?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to add this. On Thursday, and this is an open invitation to our residents, on Thursday, the 17th, we are going to have our, I guess unofficial groundbreaking, because they're already building the buildings, of the Stoughton Logistics Park. And this will be held from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. I hope that our residents who are available could come up and take part of that. It's going to be a pretty comprehensive gathering, which will celebrate what I'm pretty darn sure is the largest single-construction property in Stoughton for over 50 years. I think the only one that was before it was Reebok Drive. And this project is going to generate anywhere from $2.3 to $2.7 million in new personal, I mean, property taxes to the town. And depending on the type of equipment that goes in these warehouses, conveying systems, racking systems, forklifts, computer systems, do all that, you know, could generate personal property tax in the amount of a million and a half dollars as well. So again, you know, we're getting things done, we're bringing a project in that went through. This was very, very much vetted by the planning board, by the zoning board, border health, conservation, our town engineers. And this project just fired on all cylinders, and it was approved. They got working on it right away. And this, again, is what happens when we can put aside differences and, you know, come together and work at all levels committees made up of our citizens' representatives. It's not all the paid staff, you know, working on their own. But all of the planning board, volunteers, zoning boards, volunteers, border health, conservation, volunteers, the taxpayers of the Stoughton, of the town of Stoughton were involved with this, and it's a celebration for all of us. So I hope that if you have time from 11:00 to 1:00 on Thursday, that you come and be part of this and help us celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roberts, do you have any other comments you wanted to make?
No further comments.
Thank you. Mr. Gito?
The comments that were made regarding Sharon Fradkin were well-done by Mr. McCrisky, and that was the thing that really was on my mind this time.
Thank you. I do have a couple of comments, first of all. So our, our next meeting would, our typical meeting would be on November 5th, as I mentioned, that's Election Day. So my first comment is, everybody remember it's Election Day on November 5th, show up. You know, it's important that we, that we vote, so, you know, I just... We, you know, we, it's important that we, that we vote, so, you know, I just, I would love to see a real busy day that day. Because of that, it's, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to hold a meeting on that day. So we will schedule a meeting for the 6th, which is Wednesday. If something comes up that's more urgent, we might have a meeting before, before that time, but, but that's the next scheduled meeting, anticipated meeting. Also, so before we get to that time period.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention again, seeing we're talking about it in open session here, I may not be at that meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that. So in the event that we don't get a chance to say this at any other meeting, October 26th, at, which is a Saturday, at 11 o'clock, there is a grand opening at, at the new Stoughton Fire Station 1. The public is invited. There's going to be the grand opening ceremony and then an open house. And so.
What's the date?
The date, the date is October 26th, and that's at 11:00 a.m. at the new fire station on 400 Prospect Street. So get a chance to check this place out, it's really beautiful, very well designed. And, you know, it really, you know, befitting the work of the, the men and women who, who protect us, save us. So I'm grateful that we had this opportunity to, to see this one through to the end, and it's been a really long time coming. That was one item, elections, I think that was it. So I'm, I'm, I'm good. Move on to, to Town Manager comments. Mr. Coulter.
Mr. Chairman, through you, this was probably the largest list I've got of announcements, given the late hour. If you have no objection, I'll send those comments out to everybody tomorrow morning and post them all on my website. Nothing is of urgent nature.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So last item is citizens' comments, before we move into the budget guidelines. Are there any citizen comments? Okay, yeah, Ms. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street, Precinct 3. When the, the meetings are held on the new landscaping, I'd appreciate there being a copy, a printed copy. I can't see these screens. I mean, I know they're there, but I can't see what's on them, I can't read what's on them. And I'd also like them to have better pictures of the accessibility, telling me that this little black line, what I could see was a little black line. I'm concerned that the handicap parking will make it more difficult for me to get off the dial-a-bat and access the ramp. So I'd like that point really clarified, because not everybody who's disabled comes to Town Hall in a private vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Lyons, you also wanted an opportunity to speak?
Hi, good evening. I'll reserve one of my comments toward Ms. Roberts when she gets back. I just, I just wanted to talk very briefly. I was disturbed to see on the agenda tonight where the piece where it spoke about free cash, my question to the board right now, and I know I'm not going to get an answer, but to consider it, where it says, I just want to know if the gentleman's agreement, so to speak, between the select board and the finance committee to reduce free cash use by 300,000, and the agenda tonight, and please correct me if there's a new agenda that I didn't see, said that beyond the 300,000 that the school committee gets for their Medicaid or some account, that the rest of free cash would go to the operating budget, which everyone here knows that is against any fiscal prudent policy whatsoever. So I just wanted to express my deep concern on reading that. And I know you, Chim and Cave, had told me that I would be happy with some of the financial decisions that comes out of this board. So I just wanted to make that comment there. And then the only other, very brief second issue is, I think it's great we're getting a community center that somebody said that we'd be able to utilize in 2006, but I'm very disturbed also to hear that our capital plan, the combined capital plan that I'm grateful everybody is working on, wouldn't come to fruition until July 1st, 2026. I just wanted to ask if that was a typo and that it shouldn't be July of 2025 coming up, because that seems outrageous to me, just a thought there. And then what I wanted to start, I just wanted to take a moment to extend my deep appreciation to Ms. Roberts for the phenomenal you job, I'm sorry, the phenomenal job you did for the Frederick Richard family. The family was a class act, and the entire presentation in, in Open Arms that you prepared for their family was fantastic. So thank you very much. And that's all I had.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work. I know how hard that was. All right, good night.
Thank you so much. Any further comments? Okay. I just want to check online, any comments online? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is our fiscal 26 budget guidelines. Mr. Coulter, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a pretty exciting time for the town staff. This marks the first step in the FY26 operating budget process. Although not required by charter, it's been customary for decades to begin this process with the manager presenting his or her guidelines to this esteemed board to get your, your feedback and your guidance. I do want to talk just for a minute about the process, and then I'd like to suggest an approach that'll be efficient in going through these 16 items. Every year we begin, and it's what I'm trying to help some members of the finance committee understand, we go through a budget process blindly, without any certainty with respect to our revenues. The cherry sheet doesn't come out until spring, state aid chapter 70 oftentimes doesn't come out until after July 1st, the date in which we've already passed our budget two months, three months earlier. So revenues are very uncertain. So I want to go through with you tonight the process in which we estimate revenues, and how we do it, and why all municipalities do it this way. We also have to make an estimate at that time as to what our expenses will be. And, and I, I just want to reference the point made by Scott, because he's right. There was a discussion on this board about the levy limit. And then we got into the budget process, those were the guidelines. Guidelines often have to change in response to unforeseen items. We get into the budget process, found out we had a health insurance crisis that was going to cost us a lot of money. We had a, let me put my glasses on, please, major health insurance process, we had a school budget that was well above that which we expected at 7.2%. So any excess capacity we were hoping to have that could go towards a reduction in the levy limit was eaten, was eaten up primarily by those two items and an additional $400,000 in interest expense on debt, repairing roads and underground infrastructure. Those things were not anticipated at the time we were doing our budget guidelines. So if you recall during that period, the board voted for the budget without that excess levy limit reduction, because we just didn't have the money to do it without making major cuts either in the school budget or laying off a significant amount of people in the municipal budget. That's why it wasn't done. Certainly wasn't disregarded. We made every effort to come up with excess capacity that we could pass on to our citizens under the proposition two and a half guidelines. Before you, we have a document, and I'd ask you to refer to the one we put in front of you, not the one in the package. The one, the one in front of you has got some red ink on the second, I believe, the second page. Those are the changes that we have made due to feedback from our CFO today that are not seen in your package. So I put the new one in red so you would know what the changes are. As I said, there are 16 items, and I'd like to go through the topics first and then come back to the members. And for each item that you would like me to expand upon, I'm delighted to do that, if that's good with you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is revenue forecast, and I'm sure there'll be a question about that, so we'll get back to that. Item two is FY26 operating budget increase. Item number three, cost of living adjustments. Item number four, health and liability insurance expectations as to what we're increasing the budget by. Number five, full-time employees, FTEs. Number six, merit increases and market adjustments. Number seven, use of free cash. And to the gentle lady's point, it's, it's not the operating budget free cash we go into. What it should say there under the third line is it's the government capital, municipal government capital budgets, not departments. Thank you for that pickup. Number eight are regional schools. Number nine is Norfolk County Retirement. Number 10 is capital plan. Number 11 is OPEB liability. Number 12 is collective bargaining agreements. Number 13 are retirement buyouts. Number 14 is use of stipends. Number 15 are shared joint costs. And number 16 is a cleanup account, we're calling Accounting Cleanup Directive. So, Mr. Chairman, through you, I'm happy to either read each of these to you, but they are in front of you, or I could take questions on anything the members have questions on.
Sure. I'm assuming everyone's had an opportunity to read this. If, if there's specific areas you'd like to address, I think we could just do that rather than go through each one of these individually. The documents, the changes are useful, but they're not so significant that somebody who's reading will be, the package online, won't be able to follow along.
Sure.
So those are pretty minor.
This is the guy.
This new one.
The one in red.
And that other one's out.
Yes, sir.
So it looks like, I mean, there's one type of graphical error, looks like OPEB just was missing a B. And then I also see one line in free cash, use of free cash, it used to read, therefore that amount shall be available to the school department to use as capital budget, and that was changed to actual Medicare collections up to $300,000 shall be available to the school department to use as capital budget. So it's just a little bit more specific.
Mr. Chairman, I will add a, a beginning sentence to that item, the N number seven, and I will say that it is the intention of municipal government to use zero free cash in the operating budget. Unless something comes up that we don't know about right now.
Yeah.
That's a crisis, our plan is to use no free cash in the operating budget.
Yeah, and that, informally, there's, the, the school committee's not voted on this or deliberated on it, but I know they have a, a working group that works through the items of the budget, and it looks like, my understanding is that they're looking to target their own increase to accommodate that same expectation that there be no free cash in, in the fiscal year 2026.
My understanding is so.
Operating budget, and that free cash will now be zero, used in operating budget, will be used only for capital items.
That's correct.
But as I said, there's, there has been no vote, there's been no commitment, formal commitment, but that's where we, my most, my understanding of where it recently currently is, which is great news, great news. So we can, this is set up pretty discreetly, so we don't have, it doesn't necessarily tell a narrative story, I guess we can pick up anywhere we want.
Right.
Does anybody have any particular items they want to discuss?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. That would be joint cost.
So joint cost is item.
Item 15, but I have a question in expansion of this. So when the time comes.
Yeah, what was?
We can pull it.
Yeah.
And then we'll come, oh, you want to discuss it now?
Yeah, yeah, we can discuss it now, yeah.
Oh, okay. So last year, of the select board and the school department or a school committee were in discussions about joint cost, like the crossing guards, and on and on, some other realignment of what's, how you define joint cost. Is that still on the table? I didn't see it in this category or anywhere mentioned, but has that been resolved or agreed upon or just gone away?
We have, through you, Mr. Chairman, we've been in active discussions with the chairman of the school committee and with the superintendent on that very issue. We're getting very close to an agreement, but just for the record, our chief financial officer has made a decision on what is the best accounting practice and has consulted with our auditors on that. And the superintendent confirmed she was right. We're putting the proper expenses in the proper buckets. And so what we proposed in this guidance is that we do just that. We put the proper expenses in the proper buckets. And the reason we're doing that is it hasn't been done in several decades under our former financial officer, and it's very difficult to budget when things are not in the right places. And so Biz, to her credit, and her senior staff, have got 80 years of experience in municipal finance, and have been going through a process, and it's why our revenues for last year have not closed, of, and Biz, I can tell you, worked over 30 hours over the last weekend, this past weekend, getting things in the right box. So there were expenses that are in the municipal budget that should be in the school budget, in fact, there's school items, and there's expenses that are in the school budget that should be in joint costs. And the superintendent has confirmed that in his last assignment, that's where those costs were as well. They are in every assignment I've ever had. So we're just trying to get things right in the right bucket. And just for the record, the chief financial officer has the absolute authority and responsibility to make those adjustments and to get them in the right box. It's not, it's something we tried to negotiate in the past, and we didn't reach consensus, and now she is doing what she has been told by the DLS is just good accounting practice. We're going to continue our discussions with the school, and I think due to Mr. Cave's efforts and, and those of us at the table, you'll see another more comprehensive agreement before the budget is finalized, and it will deal with that joint cost issue.
Thank you very much.
We're going to prepare a budget where the joint costs are and the bucket they belong. That's our guidance.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
The one thing I, one thing I would ask, or is that, that at least with the, the area of joint costs, that, that this, this may be amended.
Correct.
This guideline might be amended in the, in the future, in the near future, you know, within the next couple of weeks or months. And where that will end up exactly is, can't really necessarily be predicted. But I, my, my general sense is that the, the folks that I've spoken to in the school committee and, and in the school administration are, are very willing to have open, honest conversation, they're looking just for fair dealings, and I, and I want to be able to honor that and make sure that they're able to, you know, express their own concerns. But for anybody who's, who's, you know, sort of tuning into this, this is a conversation about joint costs, but I do want to just make one thing clear, that joint costs, there's, there's no like, you know, expense sent to the schools where they have to pay, you know, a portion of joint costs. We have three budgets, and two of them are controlled and maintained by the municipal government and one by the school district. Any movement on an account from our municipal budget into joint costs will have zero impact on the school budget. And so, so this is not something that will, will affect them in any way. There's, I know that if there's concerns about, you know, net school spending, per people spending, calculations, all of these numbers, no matter where they are put in any budget, can be easily pulled out and to, to do that reporting for, for DESI and also for the DOR. And so there is no practical detriment to the, to the, to the schools in any way whatsoever. It doesn't affect them, but it does, in our, in the case of municipality, it does better represent the, the, the class of spending that, that these are really related to, these are not really strictly municipal expenses. These exist for the, the purpose of, of, of the schools, and so it is appropriate to put them into this, this, this joint cost.
Debra, that's what I meant to say.
Oh.
Yeah. However, just to.
However.
Just, just to reiterate, this does not have, regardless of what we do with joint costs. it has no impact on the school budget.
Zero.
At all. It does not touch that, any of their operations, it doesn't impact them in any way whatsoever.
In fact, Mr. Chairman, one of the items here you'll see is, we're reclassifying all technology, munis, from the school budget and the town budget and putting that in joint costs, because that is clearly an expense that is shared. And so, that will be a reduction in the school budget.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
My next comment slash question, I guess would fall under item number one, revenue forecast. Last week, I was at the Massachusetts Municipal Board Meeting in a room with all other Select Board and Town Managers, and they all expressed in affirmative their, for lack of a better word, let's call it a fear, their fear of the financial cliff. They don't believe that the government slash local and federal government, they believe that they're at a financial cliff. And they actually said they do not believe storefront properties and Proposition Two and a Half is going to solve the problem, it's going to fall on the residents. So, if that kind of communication is being shared by government people like us, we have to be mindful that there's something coming. You know, there is a snowball coming. They're calling it a financial cliff. So, what kind of controls are we putting in place, and since this is the presentation of our town manager, what kind of controls are we putting in place just in case the financial cliff is at our back door right now?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that's a great question. What the state doesn't tell us is how far off the ground that cliff is. As a former legislator, I can tell you, I worry incredibly about this coming fiscal year. And you can see it in the conservativeness of our revenue estimates. The state has given cities and towns for the past four years unprecedented amounts of cash through the SOA, no, SOA, School Opportunity Act.
Student Opportunity Act.
Through the SOA, through Chapter 70, through unrestricted local aid, through Chapter 90. It's not sustainable. It's just not sustainable. I don't expect that that revenue stream will continue very much longer. So, when do we find out? Other than that guidance to MMA, we know nothing else. They know where their fiscal cliff is, they're not telling us. So, in early spring, you'll have House One come out, and that is meaningless. House One is the governor's budget that is not, that document is not used in the budgeting process. It's just her or his recommendation as to what the legislature could do. Then the House does its budget, the Senate does his budget, their budget, they're not going to be anywhere near the same, so it's like you take a dot board and you say, which one do I want to believe? The only thing we can rely on is what's called a legislative consensus budget on revenue. And that's where they say, on revenue, you can go with this number. It won't go down, it may go up. That's the only guidance you can get, and we don't get that until probably May, April or May. So, until then, as you can see the way I've outlined in Section 1, we take our best guess at revenues, and really, the formula on local receipts is some percentage, less than 100% of actual revenues in fiscal '24. Fiscal '24 is the last year we've had hard numbers on. So, when we do local receipts, let's say it's room tax, or meals tax, or new growth, we take a percentage less than 100%. In good years, it may be 90%. In years where we're being very conservative, it could be 87%, 85%, 84%. There is no science to it. It's on best estimates based on knowledge of the legislature and how it works, and based upon municipal government budgets and how that works. And I know it's frustrating to the FinCom, because they worried that they can't do a budget without knowing the revenues, and neither can we, neither can we. So, the guideposts are to take conservative estimates by using a percentage of the last fiscal year, which was FY '24. On new growth, we know that we've got massive new growth coming with the project that Joe has spearheaded, that you're doing the groundbreaking for, or the ribbon cutting for on Thursday. We're not factoring any of that into this budget. In fact, new growth, I think I said on new growth, we're forecasting 5% greater than FY, the actual for FY '25, 5% greater. We know it's going to be double-digit new growth, but we're not baking that into this budget. And the downside of doing that is, is you have to make some hard decisions on reductions. The upside on doing that is, if you underestimate your revenues, well, then you've underestimated your free cash. And as you know, in that corner office where Biz is, any free cash we have, her first objective is to retire debt, which is a good fiscal policy. So, the more free cash we have, the less money we borrow for current projects, and the more money we have to retire debt. So, again, if it was a science, I'd introduce the formula to you. It's not. This is my eighth, seventh municipal budget, and if you count my time on the Finance Committee, which was five additional, this is the 13th, and I had another 13 in the legislature. It's about as uncertainty as the Chapter 70 formula. It's really just based upon instincts and current economic trends, and that's why we're being very conservative.
Thank you, Mr. Calder.
Do you have any other further questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Mr. Gito, do you have any questions, any sections you'd like to pull out and discuss?
As you can well imagine, there is an issue that I have with, with, let's see, item number 10, the capital plan. I agree with Ms. Lyons. Waiting until July of 2026 to have a capital plan in place is not only unfathomable, it's crazy. We have, we have a fire station, we have a police station, we've got to continue to or change funding for the school. I said that in the wrong order. It was school, police, and either funding or refunding the fire department, fire station that are coming up. The people in the town are wondering what's going on. There was a person here a few weeks ago, when there was a whole hubbub about a meeting that was held or wasn't held because the smack couldn't be involved in. But somewhere in the middle of that, a person came up and said, we don't know what's in front of us. If we went to a donut shop in town and sat with the people in the town who might be interested in that information, what would we tell them? Our job is to know that. Our job is to know that in terms of having a long-term capital plan. Now, I was told, after raising this issue a while ago, that the capital plan was in fact available. It wasn't available at all. It wasn't online. And it didn't have, doesn't have in it the cost of a new school, the cost of a new police station, whatever we might have to have for other things, and where that revenue is coming from, and what that means in terms of what the tax bill for people is going to be. We talk about having an open and transparent government, and that we are shooting to do that. Waiting until 2026 to do that.
I can't take anymore than that.
Well, you're going to have to.
No, sir, you're not telling the truth. You're not, and you've done it five times now in a public meeting. We have a four-year cap, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It's okay.
If you'd like me to speak, I will.
Then, I would like to see that capital plan that has those things in it, and where those resources are coming from. It is not available.
If you can't find it, Mr. Gito, that's on you. We've given you hard copies. There is the school, and there is the town. The town has had a four-year capital plan, revolving four-year capital planning, for almost two years now. You have a hard copy of it. It's been distributed to the town.
Where is the...
We gave you a hard copy, sir. I don't have it in my capital plan, because I don't support it. You're asking for my capital plan, and this municipal government has provided that capital plan. Every comment you've just made is about the schools, but yet you're directing it at your municipal government. I'll ask you, sir, I'll ask you, sir, why doesn't the school have a capital plan? I've had enough. Every time, and you're not telling the truth.
I am telling the truth, sir. I am telling the truth, because I don't see anything that shows it.
Because you can't find it.
Where is it, sir?
It's been online, it's been online a number of times. Mark takes, Mark's responsible for it. Mark takes it offline to amend it every single month and then puts it back online. You've been presented with a hard copy of it. You've sat with Mark and gone through the capital plan. You very well know that your municipal government has a four-year capital plan. Why you are calling out your town employees and not the school employees is beyond me.
No, I don't.
For the, I would just like to add that, thank you, sir. As you might be aware, Special Town Meeting, Article 18, is a capital needs assessment for school buildings. That is their effort to put together a capital plan that could actually be integrated with ours.
The schools have information from earlier work that has, that has numbers for long-term planning. That's where we are.
They're asking to spend $120,000.
I know that.
And that the document is meant to produce what we can actually integrate into our capital plan.
Right.
So, we do not currently have a document that we can appropriately integrate. I know that, as Chair, I know Ms. Roberts worked very hard trying to make that materialize, and it never did. So, we have another shot at this with a new set of members of the school committee who seem eager to do this. Joe Bayde also seems eager to put together a capital plan. But we can't integrate the schools into our capital plan unless they have a plan that exists. And that doesn't exist yet in a form that can actually be used. They have an article asking for money to produce that.
I know that.
And then, so that is...
And I know what information they have available to them as well.
We don't.
Yeah, we don't. We've asked for it, and it's not been provided to us. So, in the time being, what we have is an article, and then, if they jump right on it, maybe we can integrate it faster, but, you know, realistically, 2026 might be as good as it gets.
It seems to me that saying that you have blanks in here, and you can't put anything in there to deal with very large numbers, says to people, well, we don't know what's happening. You're not going to get exact numbers. You are not going to do that until you get to the design phase on a project. When that thing comes up and you fund a study for that particular thing, to say that you don't have anything at all, and you can't give sort of a ballpark estimate of what that is, so that people have an idea of what they're dealing with, I don't think is terribly responsible.
Mr. Chairman.
I mean, I know that people will say, oh, no, well, we've got to make sure that those numbers are right, because people are going to come back to those numbers and say, well, you told us five years ago that the number was going to be X. Well, you know what? Those numbers change.
Mr. Chairman, if you just asked a question...
The numbers that are voted by our school committee, we're not starting to get it to our...
I'm just confused, is the gentleman talking, the questions, are you referring to Lou, to the school budget, or the school capital budget that doesn't exist, or the town capital budget that does exist?
I don't think either one do.
We can't give hard numbers in a capital budget until we do that type of feasibility study that you just referred to, that you just referred to. You heard one earlier this evening.
How do you put together a four-year plan, then? If you have to do a feasibility study four years in advance?
That's a great question, because we can't spend the money on a feasibility study unless it's approved by Town Meeting. So, that's, you just answered your own question, sir.
No, I don't think I have.
We cannot do a feasibility study, that one costs $75,000 that Mark did. That $75,000 had to be approved by Town Meeting. If Town Meeting doesn't approve the feasibility study, I mean, we cannot give an estimate on a multimillion-dollar project. We have got a working document that we created, Lou, at your direction, and we're very proud of that document. You were the one that guided us to do this. That item in this guidance was given to us directly by the schools. They're asking for $120,000 to create a capital plan that they can merge with the town capital plan in FY '26. I don't, and you don't, control the schools. So, I hate to see my team be talked down on a capital plan that they are producing, and when you're talking about a school administration that has not produced a capital plan. Mark Tisdale must be boiling right now. He worked so hard on that capital plan. I know you've sat down with him and discussed it with him. I know he's gone over it with you. He's given it to you in hard copy. So, for you to sit there for five minutes and talk about you were promised a capital plan, you don't have one. Yes, sir, you were promised one, and you got one, and it's updated every single year. Your fight is with the schools. Take it off with the schools. Don't abuse my staff, okay?
I'm sorry?
And don't disrespect them. They're working very hard on this, on your behalf. It was at your direction we did it, and I thank you for that. It was great guidance. But then, don't beat them up for something they did.
I'm not trying to beat anybody up. All I'm saying is that there's, that there is a gap here in information. That's not beating anybody up. It's saying, it is saying that there is not information that should be available.
In your opinion. Please keep your comments...
You know, facts are friendly.
Facts are friendly. We designed it as you asked us to design it, sir.
Oh, really?
Two years ago.
I think we, do you have any further questions about any other items?
Ah, yes. The merit increases. What are merit increases?
Merit increase is an increase above the COLA of 3% that we would recommend for high performers that are performing well above expectation and that deserve more than just a cost of living adjustment. The provision we put in this year is, there will be no merit increases above 5% without a written narrative and market analysis of... of why they deserve that merit increase.
So if a person performs well in a single year, and they get, let's just say, a 5% increase, that becomes part of their base salary?
Yes, sir.
As opposed to a bonus?
We don't traditionally give out bonuses in municipal government. But yes, an increase to their base salary would be a permanent increase to their base salary that would be carried over year over year.
I would suggest that you think about that strategy. I mean, I have done analyses of other organizations where that strategy was used. And people who don't continue to be the best performers in the organization have salaries much above other people. So I just—I just suggest you think about that, and think about it in terms of you performed well this year, and you get that bonus. Not that you get it for the rest of your time as an employee.
I would agree with you that that's one way to approach it. I do agree with that. That's what I did primarily in the private sector. In the municipal sector, that is frowned upon, giving a bonus for merit. The second thing is if you've got a high-performing employee right now, and we don't do it for one year of high performance above expectations. We do it for somebody who is continuously performing above expectations. Typically, we're going to lose that employee to another town that will pay at-market. And if we can't pay at-market, then we're constantly be going—we're going to be turning over our workforce. We're constantly going to interesting—go out and hire people that make more than that salary which we were about to give to that employee because we were paying below—
Mr. Town Manager, I understand that. I really do.
Well, thank you.
I'm just saying that there are times when perhaps that's not the best strategy. Sometimes it may be.
I agree with that point. I agree with that point. Sometimes it may be.
Okay, then let's stop that conversation.
I thought you were suggesting I change that policy to lump sums. That's what I thought I was hearing.
I'm going to offer Vice Chair Carrera an opportunity. I want to jump in.
I was always taught that I could be wrong. Merit increases were certifications, experience, more schooling. Not just, "Hey, you did your job, and you did it well. Here's some cash." The Brockton mayor who took over—who—from years ago, I saved the ad—the thing and the thing, he says, "In the municipal sector, you can't reward people with money." He says it doesn't work. He says in the private sector, you can because you can make it up, you can draw it in. We're not a money-making thing. We're a department-oriented supplier of services to the residents. When does the merit start?
I hope never. I hope the merit—
I tell you something. I saw the way somebody was treated who did good. I saw that.
You don't want to go there.
And I see it all the time. Sometimes people have to be thankful they got a job. I am. If I worked for you, I'd be thankful I had a job. My job is to make you look good and the town look good. Earn my pay. You get your raise every day, so you get—you're going to get your union raise, then you're going to get your merit raise. I—maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but—
Our practice has been to do these only in extraordinary cases. It's not a common—
No, no, it's common. Let's get it out there. It's common. Things are growing in this town.
Out of a percentage of the total number of employees, is it 50%?
We were in deficit spending because we were doing something for somebody, and then we had to make up the money. I just—I just—I just wanted to know where we were drawing the lines, whether it was education, certification, experience. That's what I base things on.
And your town manager bases it on something different, Scott. I don't care if the wall is littered with certificates. It's based upon performance and value added to this town. And somebody could have 100 certificates, and their performance could be way below expectation. There could be somebody that performs, who's getting $20 an hour and is operating three pieces of equipment, but the union doesn't think they deserve a raise. And they won't let us give that raise unless we give 10 other people the same money. That person deserves a merit increase. You could have—you could have people like—who work in this office, who just facilitated a $2 million grant, who's very seldom appreciated in this building. Without her, Joe and I wouldn't have had a chance. She was paid $30,000 below market of what other economic development people are getting. I would suggest that performance, since the day I arrived, is worth a merit increase. And I would expect that I would be required to defend that in a narrative. That's what we wrote in the guidance. To make an absolute, "We're not going to have merit increases. Oh, we're going to give them a lump sum, or you think it should be based upon the paper?" Then you should manage the town. That's what you're paying me to do. And that's why I'm giving you this guidance. And I'm going to prepare the budget this way, and then the members can vote it down. But you're asking me to use my best judgment after 40 years of executive experience—
Also, I'm asking you for an explanation. I'm not—I'm not dictating to you because you're the town manager. I might be your boss, but I do respect you for who you are, whether you respect me or not, which I know you don't.
I'm not going there, Scott.
So you can say what you can do. You can berate everybody across the table, but we can't have an opinion on anything.
We need to get back to the merit of the—
He doesn't berate everybody across the table. Come on, let's stay focused.
You weren't here, Mr. McCrisky, when I was put down on—on September 4th. Yeah, well, you missed something.
We're outside the scope of this conversation.
At least I do it face-to-face.
I'd like to actually get back to what we're here to deliberate on.
Every day, Scott.
Mr. Gito, were there any other items that you wanted to cover on this?
There you go. Maybe there should be a— a bonus line item in here. So that we—so that we deal with the difference between what is a merit increase, a market adjustment, and somebody in fact doing a good job in one year in an area.
Okay. I'll do that. Any other comments or questions?
I may very well have some more questions later. But, you know, we got this late Thursday night of a long weekend. And this is the first day back from vacation. So I haven't really studied this in terms of where—where was 2024? What was the final budget on that? What does this turn into in terms of numbers? What is the amount of carryover from one year to the next? For instance, in the police department, we put in either three or four additional people, even though we knew that we weren't going to fund them this year. But that's in the budget. So that turns into a surplus at the end of the year. I mean, I'm not—that's—that's not bad, good. It's just structurally how—that particular part happened.
That would convert Lou to free cash.
That only turns into a couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe. But I don't know what other things are there. So I have no real way of getting a handle on what this might mean in terms of where we were, what we budgeted this year, and where we're going next year. And it would seem to me that we should have a little bit of understanding of that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to help answer that question, if I may. We're three months—July, August, September, three full months into this fiscal year. So clearly, we don't know where we're going to end up. But you talk about that surplus, Lou, and it's—I understand your question. That would—that doesn't get carried over at all. That goes right into free cash, which Town Meeting decides how they spend it. Nothing carries over unless it's been encumbered if a purchase order has already been ordered. So nothing gets carried over. And as I tried to explain, the art of doing this budget is—leaves us with so many unknowns. I mean, we can't tell what the rates are, what the run rate is on expenses three months into—or quarter into the fiscal year. But we have to have a starting point. And the guidelines are only intended to be that starting point. We may find out as we get closer to turning it over to the Select Board that our expenses are much higher in run rate and in health insurance, and we may have to adjust that above 10%. We may find that our revenues are exceeding expectation because the money we have in the bank is earning more interest at a higher rate. We can increase that revenue. It's a very much an iterative process. There's no hard starting point. We can only use basic guidelines. And as information comes in from the state on revenues, or if information—as information comes in on our expenses, between now and when you vote on it, December 15th, or from the 15th to the 30th, it'll be a lot—the numbers will be much harder than they are right now. Right now, there's no certainty in this budget process. There's only experience and guidance given to us by the MMA and by the state. That's all—and DLS. That's all we have to work with.
Yeah, I mean, just—for whatever it may be. This may be a useless comment, but I will say that this represents the starting point, a collection of reasonable assumptions. And then—and then they actually go and develop a budget based on these, and they see, "Did this actually work out?" But these are all reasonable assumptions, especially with regard to revenues and potential increases and various things. We don't know what they're going to be, and we won't know. But we got to start somewhere. And if they don't end up being what we guessed them to be, but we still pick reasonable assumptions, things that made sense, then we have, you know, grounds for reasonably changing our minds and saying that what our assumptions were were off, and so we need to do something slightly different. Or even if we get into fiscal '25, and it turns out our assumptions were wrong, so long as everybody agrees that they're reasonable assumptions, that might also give us a reason to, you know, reach out to the Finance Committee for either a transfer of some kind or, you know, use of stabilization. If they also agree, yeah, your assumptions were reasonable, but there was no way to predict whatever it is that happened, catastrophe of some kind, or, you know, another pandemic or whatever it might be, which has changed our assumptions. But so long as we're going in with something that resembles reasonable assumptions, I think that we are making our best effort and offering the town staff the best opportunity to create a budget that makes sense. It may not be perfect. It may not be—they may not be able to predict the future, but they can forecast reasonably, sir.
Okay. Getting back to the point that Ms. Roberts mentioned before in terms of fiscal cliffs. I've mentioned for a couple of years now that we need to think about and perhaps cost out intermunicipal agreements, agreements between ourselves and the state. I agree with what Ms. Roberts said. Salary costs are going up tremendously. And they far outstrip the 2.5%. Real costs for goods are going up. They may be leveling off some. But, you know, they're leveling off at a higher level because when you talk about the inflation rate going down, that doesn't mean that last year's wasn't 10%. It's 10%, and then it may only be 5%. So it's 15%. People talk about, "Oh, things are getting great." But it's not great if you're getting 2.5% more in plus new growth and thank Joe and Tom for getting some of this new growth in. But, you know, that—that's not going to happen all the time. And we may be able to cover some holes up. But there has to be a different way of dealing with a lot of the administrative costs that we have. I mean, 351 cities and towns are doing the same thing in terms of financial transactions, counting the money, taking money in, doing a whole lot of other stuff that's administrative work. If the state had a system that everybody could feed into, that would take a lot of that away. But we don't have that. But we are expected to continue to take the money that we get from the state, which is not going to be as much, I don't think, as time goes on because the state has got to get that money from somewhere. And there's a whole lot of people cost in government.
Fair enough. I want to stay on—
So I would suggest that we put that other item in, intermunicipal agreements, and do some analysis of that instead of just saying, "Oh, we're going to do it this way or that way." The other part of that is when we take a person off a job— this is in another area, the stipends piece or whatever—
The merit increases and market adjustments? The stipend is not listed here anywhere.
We're taking them off. We're giving them a stipend to do something else. They're not doing the basic job in part of that. So what's the loss in that? I mean, maybe it's a good thing, maybe it's not. But we ought to at least know that. So those are the things that I would—that I would look at. I mean, I've done budgeting in my—in my career, and I understand that it's not an easy job. It doesn't have to be. We don't have to fight with one another. We have to see how we get through things and get information together.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to publicly apologize for my behavior, but I would like to put it in context. My team spent three nights—four nights last week along with myself before intergovernmental committees that were not very kind, and then to a finance committee that got scolded by the audience for rudeness and for misbehavior, especially by the gentle lady in the front row scolded them. We're tired of being beat up. I'm tired of being beat up. I can take a lot, but my staff can't. And so I apologize for my behavior. But we have three months' worth of deliberation before us. I can tell you, I will lose a dozen people if this behavior continues. And I do have an obligation to protect my team, and I'll protect myself. And so I apologize for my outburst. I do. I sincerely mean that. But as Cynthia pointed out the other night, what we went through for three nights was a disgrace. And I get feedback from everybody in this town that it was a disgrace. People are not impressed with the abuse. I'm not impressed with the abuse. And I won't stay here to take the abuse much longer.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Early on, when I asked to speak, we were talking about item number six, merit increases and market adjustments. And I was going to add in at that time that we're—we've started doing performance evaluations. So—well, not the "we," but the Mr. Cultures and the department heads. So that's a way to track performance, to see who are the high performers, mid performers, and low performers. But that's what I was going to say at that time. What I want to say now is the starting point of any budget process is to start with assumptions. What are your assumptions? And then you develop the numbers— And then you develop the numbers after you agree on the assumptions. And I believe, and Mr. Culture is calling them guidelines, in my world, we call them assumptions, starting points. What is the plan? What is the objective? I believe Mr. Culture wants us to approve this as his starting point, his assumptions, so he can give us some numbers, so we can see how it looks, how it's going to play out. I might be wrong, but I think that's what he wants, is a vote, so he can get started, so he can give us some numbers.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, through you?
Yes, sir.
Steve and I are in fairly advanced negotiations with the schools on a MOU. I would ask, and thank you for recommending that, Deborah, I would suggest that maybe we hold off on a vote for a few weeks, because they are going to meet, we're going to meet again. This may change dramatically. But this gives us enough to get started on Thursday. That's our first major budget hearing. And we can start with all the CBAs, we can start with all the information we know to be solid. So if, through you, Steve, if the members want to wait two weeks, this may be refined even more significantly. Just a thought.
Sure. I just want to make sure everybody gets some questions in. And I appreciate the comment. And I do have a question, comment, but I'm going to wait until the very end. So, Mr. Carrera, Vice Chair Carrera, do you have any items on here that you'd like to ask questions about?
Nope. I wanted, I wanted to, I didn't have any problems with anything I just spoke on that one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. It's okay.
I didn't have any problems with anything in here, and the revenue forecast is usually, I think, the draft revenue sheet that we used to get from Bill Rowe. So I'm taking that as being the same thing.
Yeah.
And, but I wanted to make that motion on the excess capacity tonight, because if we wait, I might as well not even think about it.
No, no, then I don't want to wait on, I think we can discuss that, but I just want to make sure we get through this first.
I mean, time is, time is-
I would second that for you.
Time is getting long, and if we're done ripping this thing apart, which, it doesn't have to be torn apart, I just asked a question, you know, and-
I just want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity.
So I'm all done.
Perfect. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. McCrisky, any comments, questions? So the one thing that I would add, and I'm going to have to rely on, there's people here know this better than I do, so if I misspeak, I know you're a former member of the Board of Assessors, for example, and it's probably something Mr. Culture is familiar with. But if I'm not mistaken, if we reduce the levy limit in the current year, in, and we are able to, you know, let's imagine we are successfully able to do that over the course of a couple of years, the levy limit that we are able to go to starts at, that is what the 2.5% is a factor of. So even though we don't reach that limit, it's not, the next year isn't 2% of what we use, it's 2% of what is available to us, which, in the event of a fiscal cliff, actually provides a safeguard, a way of producing more revenues, unfortunately, through taxation, but be able to do it without any sort of override, sort of a de facto override, just by going 2% of what your limit is. That's not to say, I don't think that's something that we should default to, something, that's not something that we would, would be part of our philosophy going forward. However, in the event of catastrophe, it offers an opportunity that we wouldn't otherwise have by always reaching that limit, and only, you know, using essentially every dollar that's available to us. So that was it. I do, I would like to hear the motion. You have, Vice Chair Carrera, do you have like a whole dollar amount, or are you talking about like just making effort to reduce the levy limit in general?
There is a dollar amount.
Okay.
And I looked at what we used last year as estimated revenue, and it said it was going to go up 5%, but I'm not looking to, you know, take that down. If it goes up 5%, it goes up 5%. So last year, I asked for 375, and I figured this year we could do 400. I mean, there's other things happening in this town that's going to bring in revenue. We're going to pass the stuff that was in the warrant article, where you can get money before a project's finished, you can go buy what's, you know, in the ground or whatever. I'm sure that's going to pass. Some people have already called me and said, what if I can't work through the winter, and then they're going to, you know, start taking money already? I says, it is what it is. It goes on. It's a law. We adopt it, we adopt it. So there is ways of, and the money isn't, it isn't real until it's real. I don't know if you understand, if you understand it. Deborah does, I do. I was on finance for nine years, so I understand what excess capacity means. When it reaches that, then you can reach in it. It just sits there like a ghost at that number. But like Tom said, if he has a problem, and it has to be interceded into the, then it gets put in. I mean, it's just, you're estimating the thing, we're guessing that it's going to go higher, and this could give a break. But the way we do this is going to help the bonding companies showing us what we're doing, and it's going to help out if, you know, the new school passes, it's going to show that we're doing the right stuff. Everything balances one on top of the other. So I'm not doing it to be vicious, I'm doing it for the residents to show that we care. So that's the number I was looking for?
So the motion is to, to-
The motion is to lower the levy to $400,000 and move the $400,000 into excess capacity.
Okay. So it's not, you're not lowering the limit to 400,000, you're lowering it by 400,000, correct? Just to make sure we don't-
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to run a municipal cover off $400,000.
I mean, I was, I was looking for guidance from, like, but I haven't had a chance to talk to Brian Winter about it, because I was away, and I was sick for a couple of weeks. But I think this is the way it should be done.
So, since we currently don't have a budget, and this is, you know, I hope this comes out the right way, this is sort of aspirational. Our hope is that we're able to do this, right? That that's available.
It's all based on the new growth guesstimate. That's what it's based on. It happens every year, because we can't say you're going to get that.
Because new growth is about 800,000 every year? Is that the correct number? So you took 50% of that? That's how you got up? That's how you developed the 400,000?
I just figured, I figured a little percentage raise from 375 to this year.
So I'm going to try and summarize, and this gives me an opportunity, if you tell me I'm wrong, please do. But what Mr. Carrera's proposing, what Vice Chair Carrera is proposing, is to limit, you know, the tax levy or the amount that we're able to tax by $400,000. The number is set by formula that where, when figuring out what the 2.5% increase is, there's a name for that, but I can't recall what it is. And so whatever that upper limit is of what we're able to take via 2.5%, we'll reduce by $400,000, and that would be capacity that we would not be using.
So why would we do that instead-
Can you repeat that, Mr. Culture?
It would be the exact opposite of a prop 2.5 override. It would be an underwrite, where we would reduce the levy.
Yeah. Though in underwrite, actually, there's a way to vote for that process, but it's sort of an informal underwrite, where we are deliberately using less than we have, are able to.
So why would we do that instead of putting that money into a reserve account? I mean, and basically rating ourselves an insurance policy for future years? I mean, that, that makes no sense to me. I mean, in all candor, it really doesn't. It's, it-
It's financial.
If we're talking about having a potential fiscal cliff, and we're also saying, well, yes, we know that we may have a fiscal cliff, we know that costs are going up at a higher rate, and we want to run this business, so what we're going to do is lower our costs. Now, I guess I didn't go to Chicago School of Economics. So I really don't know how that makes sense.
It's not, so not my motion, so I'm not going to sit here arguing it, but Mr. Carrera, would you like to provide some additional information?
What it is, is you're not asking for the money from the residents, and what happens is you're counting on the new growth to recover that money if you needed it, because it's over here in excess capacity. So if the, if it overproduces, or it makes 800,000, then you've covered it. You're letting your town, what happens in it, the new growth, whatever works for you. I guess I see that. It's just not having $400,000. That's right. You're not asking the residents for it. Somebody else is going to pay it when they come in and they do stuff for the town. Like, when logistics comes on, you're going to be soaking wet with money. And 400,000 would be nothing then. That's when you put money aside.
So my, so the motion's been made. There wasn't a second. Is there a second to the motion?
I will second that motion for discussion.
Thank you very much. So we do have a second. So there's things I like about the idea, and there's things I'm concerned with. One is, you know, I think it sends the right message, hands down. I think this is where we want to go. I mean, if we are able to successfully reduce the use of free cash in our operating budget, there's really no, you know, there's no reason to stop there, you know? And if we're able to reduce even further, that would be great. To make this commitment, this commitment could, we currently can only make this commitment as a function of the municipal budgets. We couldn't ask the schools to share in this, in this cut. So we're really reducing our own budget by this amount. It does, you know, if this were all a game, and we were players, I can imagine somebody on another team saying, well, you forfeit that, it's fine, I'll also increase my budget by $400,000. And, and so, you know, you want to keep on going, you know, we want to cut it by another $400,000, I'll raise mine by another $400,000. And we don't really have any control over that. And I would rather not end up in a place where we underfund the government and are sort of played a little bit. And I want to make sure that we're able to do this. This is something I want to aspire to. I would love it to be aspirational, like, you know, as part of it, that we're going to make an attempt to do this. But if we're simply cutting it off, I don't know if I could support that. I think that we run into, into that problem, that if we were the only ones, if we were the only stakeholders, we could hold ourselves to it, but we're not the only stakeholders. And so we end up potentially, just essentially sending that off to another department.
We can capture that same, pardon me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, of course.
We can capture that same sentiment by putting that in a stabilization fund, and when we have a debt exclusion, we can use that money to borrow less money. And that means that people get their money back in a different way, but we get what we need to have.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Another way I looked at it is you're taking that right off the top, that 400,000 right off the top, and you're putting it in a stabilization fund, I call it stabilization fund or reserve, pick one, but you're not touching it until you need to. And then, when the time comes, you can pay down on debt. So all the money that's due us that's coming in, right off the top, take, if it's 400,000 that Vice Chair Carrera is recommending, then we put that in the stabilization fund. And paying down on debt is a way to help residents. 400,000 spread across 30,000 residents, and I'm using, that's our number, they won't really see that, but if we're paying down on debt, they will. They will, they will see it. Because it's less an impact on them.
So if anybody else, any other comments? Yeah, Mr. McCrisky?
Just for what it's worth, I'm concerned that we're overestimating new growth and when it's going to be available. You know, until we have a hard number, I'm concerned that we're going to run short, we're going to take something out of the budget, run short on new revenue that we were expecting. We don't have any hard facts yet as to what that number's going to be. So it's almost like spending money, we hope we're going to get it when we get it, but then we just found out that our vendor's going to wait us 90 days instead of the two weeks they promised. And then they recalculated the number. I'm just concerned that, you know, we do something like that, and the revenue that we're talking about is going to be due, just on the new growth we were talking about, and somebody mentioned it as a part of this discussion. We may not even get 50% of that in the next fiscal year, by the way it's going to be, you know, the project done, and revenue starting to be generated through the tax rate. So I'm concerned with that. You know, we're lowering, yet we're not sure of the number. If we had a hard number, I'd feel a lot more comfortable saying, I got no problem with that, because we know we're getting this on this timeframe. But if that doesn't take place, if, you know, if for some reason they run into a problem and the project slows down, you know, I mean, anything can happen. I don't think it would, but I think we owe it to ourselves, if we're going to look at something like that, we should know exactly what the new growth is going to be before we anticipate it, so that we can make a change in the budget. That's my own concern. I'm not, I'm not opposed to trying to do something like that, but I just want to make sure that the numbers that we're anticipating are real numbers, are not hopeful numbers.
Mr. Carrera, Vice Chair Carrera?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. KB. New growth is always a moving number. We estimate it, and we've been estimating it since I got on the board in 2000 and ran nine years. We estimate it every year, every year. And you've been on the boards right along while they've been doing it, and there was no problem. And you want to know what? Sometimes they overestimated it and caused a problem. They found the feel-good number was like 800, 850. That was it. That's where they knew they weren't going to stumble. And then it worked. I sat on finance, we never got a hard number, because we had to wait. I'm not, I'm not looking, Tom Manager-Culture, when I made the motion last year, he explained it in a nice way, that said what it was going to do. I'm just doing what I remembered when I was on finance, and we were trying to find ways to do things. The money isn't being spent. It's being, like Steve said, it's an under, Tom said, it's an under, underwrite. It's going over here in a side box called excess capacity. It'll always be, can always be- It'll always be, can always be gotten to when that level gets there, when it makes a true number.
Yeah, nope, Scott, I understand.
It isn't that I'm short in a department. Things are going to be fine.
I'm not saying that, Scott. I'm not saying that at all. I'm making a comment based on comments that were made here tonight. I understand. I was on Finance Committee too a long time ago, okay? And I understand it, Scott. But what I hear is talking about this and talking about new growth in Logistics Park was mentioned. It was mentioned. And all I'm saying is I'm open to that.
But Tom Manager said Logistics Park is not going to be figured into this year's budget.
Right, but then somebody else said we have the new growth that's coming up here. So I mean...
There's new growth in other areas. You've got a new growth right beside the Barrel Center that's going to inject into this town a good amount of money.
How much?
I haven't sat down and figured it out.
That's all I'm saying, Scott.
It's a good amount of money.
It's nice to have real numbers. I'm saying, I'm not opposing it. I just like to be a little bit more cautious and have a better...
Some of the tiffs have rolled off.
Yeah, I understand that.
And you know what that is? That becomes new growth, Joe.
I understand, Scott. All I'm saying is that it would be nice to have the number sitting here in front of us.
You're not going to get that number, Joe.
Scott, we can get a better idea now.
You don't even have a revenue sheet that says what's what.
That's right. That's why I'm saying. Picking a number now is just something I'm cautious with.
Vote no then, Joe.
That's all. Scott, don't tell me what to do, you know? I mean, I'm just trying to have my vision and my concern. Well, that's all we seem to do when we don't agree with you is argue.
No, it wasn't a problem last year. All of a sudden, it's a big problem this year.
And I get an assault as to why my idea is not right. All I'm saying is these are my concerns. I didn't say I was voting yes or no.
Yeah, so...
11:30. You know, this is crazy.
Okay, so on the motion, it was seconded to to limit capacity of the levy by 400,000 dollars, reduce it by 400,000 dollars, and have that money be in excess capacity on the levy. In that motion, all in favor?
Oh, friendly amendment, please?
Okay.
The friendly amendment is that 400,000 goes toward a stabilization fund.
Then it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be...
It's got to go into excess capacity.
It goes into excess capacity?
Yeah. Otherwise, we are in fact taking it and it's no longer reducing the levy. So there was a friendly amendment. Accepting that or not accepting it?
It doesn't work.
I know, I know.
If he wants it in, then it's a dead mulch.
Yeah, it becomes, it no longer functions. Okay.
It's out of reach. It's really out of reach.
So, yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No? Okay, so that failed. It was one yes, four noes. I will have a, I'm going to add a slightly different notion here. I would like something aspirational. It's not set in stone. But I would add in here that the, between the municipal government and the schools, they make an effort to reduce the levy by 400,000 dollars. And this is something that we will then address.
And funding. And paying down on debt is a way to help residents. 400,000 spread across 30,000 residents, and I'm using that, that's our number. They won't really see that, but if we're paying down on debt, they will. They will see it. Because it's less an impact on them.
So if anybody else, any other comments? Yeah, Mr. McCrisky.
Just for what it's worth, I'm concerned that we're overestimating new growth and when it's going to be available. You know, until we have a hard number, I'm concerned that we're going to run short. We're going to take something out of the budget, run short on new revenue that we were expecting. We don't have any hard facts yet as to what that number's going to be. So it's almost like spending money, we hope we're going to get it when we get it, but then we just found out that our vendor's going to wait us 90 days instead of the two weeks they promised. And then they recalculated the number. I'm just concerned that, you know, we do something like that and the revenue that we're talking about is going to be due just on the new growth we were talking about. And somebody mentioned it as a part of this discussion. That we may not even get 50% of that in the next fiscal year by the way it's going to be, you know, the project done and revenue starting to be generated through the tax rate. So I'm concerned with that. You know, we're lowering, yet we're not sure of the number enough. We had a hard number. I'd feel a lot more comfortable saying, I got no problem with that because we know we're getting this on this timeframe. But if that doesn't take place, if, you know, if for some reason they run into a problem and the project slows down, you know, I mean, anything can happen. I don't think it would, but I think we owe it to ourselves. If we're going to look at something like that, we should know exactly what the new growth is going to be before we anticipate it so that we can make a change in the budget. That's my own concern. I'm not opposed to trying to do something like that. But I just want to make sure that the numbers that we're anticipating are real numbers and not hopeful numbers.
Mr. Carrera, President Chair Carrera.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. KB. New growth is always a moving number. We estimate it, and we've been estimating it since I got on the board in 2000 and ran nine years. We estimate it every year, every year. And you've been on the boards right along while they've been doing it, and there was no problem. And you want to know what? Sometimes they overestimated it and caused a problem. They found the feel-good number was like 800, 850. That was it. That's where they knew they weren't going to stumble. And then it worked. They sat on finance. We never got a hard number because we had to wait. I'm not looking... Tom Manager called to... When I made the motion last year, he explained it in a nice way that said what it was going to do. I'm just doing what I remembered when I was on finance and we were trying to find ways to do things. The money isn't being spent. It's being, like Steve said, it's an under, Tom said, it's an underwrite. It's going over here in a side box called excess capacity. It'll always be, can always be gotten to when that level gets there, when it makes a true number.
Yeah, nope, Scott, I understand.
It isn't that I'm short in a department. Things are going to be fine.
I'm not saying that, Scott. I'm not saying that at all. I'm making a comment based on comments that were made here tonight. I understand. I was on Finance Committee too a long time ago, okay? And I understand it, Scott. But what I hear is talking about this and talking about new growth in Logistics Park was mentioned. It was mentioned. And all I'm saying is I'm open to that.
But Tom Manager said Logistics Park is not going to be figured into this year's budget.
Right, but then somebody else said we have the new growth that's coming up here. So I mean...
There's new growth in other areas. You've got a new growth right beside the Barrel Center that's going to inject into this town a good amount of money.
How much?
I haven't sat down and figured it out.
That's all I'm saying, Scott. It's a good amount of money. It's nice to have real numbers. I'm saying, I'm not opposing it. I just like to be a little bit more cautious and have a better...
Some of the tiffs have rolled off.
Yeah, I understand that.
And you know what that is? That becomes new growth, Joe.
I understand, Scott. All I'm saying is that it would be nice to have the number sitting here in front of us.
You're not going to get that number, Joe.
Scott, we can get a better idea now.
You don't even have a revenue sheet that says what's what.
That's right. That's why I'm saying. Picking a number now is just something I'm cautious with.
Vote no then, Joe.
That's all. Scott, don't tell me what to do, you know? I mean, I'm just trying to have my vision and my concern. Well, that's all we seem to do when we don't agree with you is argue.
No, it wasn't a problem last year. All of a sudden, it's a big problem this year.
And I get an assault as to why my idea is not right. All I'm saying is these are my concerns. I didn't say I was voting yes or no.
Yeah, so...
11:30. You know, this is crazy.
Okay, so on the motion, it was seconded to to limit capacity of the levy by 400,000 dollars, reduce it by 400,000 dollars, and have that money be in excess capacity on the levy. In that motion, all in favor?
Oh, friendly amendment, please?
Okay.
The friendly amendment is that 400,000 goes toward a stabilization fund.
Then it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be...
It's got to go into excess capacity.
It goes into excess capacity?
Yeah. Otherwise, we are in fact taking it and it's no longer reducing the levy. So there was a friendly amendment. Accepting that or not accepting it?
It doesn't work.
I know, I know.
If he wants it in, then it's a dead mulch.
Yeah, it becomes, it no longer functions. Okay.
It's out of reach. It's really out of reach.
So, yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, so that failed. It was one yes, four noes. I will have a, I'm going to add a slightly different notion here. I would like something aspirational. It's not set in stone. But I would add in here that the, between the municipal government and the schools, they make an effort to reduce the levy by 400,000 dollars. And this is something that we will then address when we actually get the budgets in December and see if that was achievable. And we can always vote then to do this on a much more formal and definitive level. But there being aspiration to make this effort to reduce by 400,000 dollars. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, so three yeses, one no, and one abstention. The motion passes. And so we do have the aspiration to do this. It'll be part of the guidelines if it's possible. It's something that we would expect to see. If it's not possible, we'd just like to understand why. I think that's pretty reasonable. The final agenda item is the consent agenda. This is, actually, do we want to vote on the guidelines as they currently are?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion to approve these guidelines?
So made, second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Four yeses, one no. With the consent agenda, we have six items. This is the approval of open session minutes, meeting of September 24th, 2024, and September 30th, 2024. Item B is approval of special town meeting posting. Item C, approval of warrant for state election posting. Item D, application for road race or parade, Veterans Day Parade on November 11th, 2024. Item E, application for a one-day beer and wine license on October 18th, 2024 for Paige Grocery Store and Liquor. Item F, determination of useful life, new jet truck and F-250 work truck with plow. And we already addressed item G. I'm not going to include that with consent agenda. So items A through F, is there a motion to approve?
I would like to pull. I would like to pull A, please.
A? Okay. Okay, so is there a motion to approve consent agenda, item B through E? Okay. Second motion made by Joe McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item A, Ms. Roberts.
Yes, under, on page one, under Select Board Comments, they had the date incorrect for the Frederick Richards. It should be Sunday, October 6th. That's the only change.
Okay, any other changes?
No.
Okay, so...
I think there was one other thing. On the last vote, I stepped away.
Yeah, we already voted on that one. Okay, so motion to approve item A with Ms. Roberts' amendment?
Second.
Okay. Made by Ms. McCrisky, seconded by Ms. Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Last, item F, determination of useful life, new jet truck and F-250.
I think we need to look at the useful life, these, that whole list.
Sorry, is your mic on? Would you mind turning your mic on?
No, it's not. Thank you.
I think the useful life probably... We might have to increase the useful life of some or all of our equipment because a lot of people use this equipment longer than five or 10 years. I mean, and if the criteria to come to town meeting becomes the maximum useful life without thinking about, does this vehicle work well or not? Then maybe we are buying things too quickly. And if we are getting into a different financial situation, I think we need to think about this. So I mean, if we go ahead and approve this, I would suggest that we look at the whole package and figure out, you know, I'm not the one who knows all about this. Mr. Carrera and Mr. McCrisky probably know a heck of a lot more about what's the useful life of something. But I think we need to take and look critically at that. And I just want to mention it now. I may not vote in favor of this, but other people might, and that's fine. But I think that we need to think about that as we move forward.
I appreciate it. And so, but on the specific request for these two items, is there a motion to approve item F?
I would, I'd just like to ask a question if we're going to adhere to the policy of the Board of Selectmen that we're getting a new jet truck and another F-250. We got four F-250s at the last town meeting. And I don't know what we're replacing, which ones for what or whatever. But the policy is trade, auction, or junk? I think I can help there through you, Mr. Chairman. These were the two trucks that were approved at the May annual town meeting. This is purely a financial tool. Neither of these, the old jet truck will either be traded or, it's 20 years old, will either be traded or scrapped. And the F-250 work truck with plow, that, we did retire an F-250 this year. We're trying to keep that truck count down to the present level so we're not insuring and financing more vehicles. So I know that that's a replacement. But what this is, is the bond council tells us what they recommend for borrowing in terms of useful life in terms. Both Scott and Joe both know the jet truck will probably last 20 years and that the F-250 will last well over five years if it's taken care of the way we take care of them now. But the bond company is risk averse, so they want them financed over fewer years. So this is from the treasurer. The bond company's requiring this as a means of financing what town meeting voted to approve last May.
Yeah, and somebody better than me, but I believe this is typically used really just to calculate depreciation over that time period. It doesn't serve like, it's not actually like saying we're going to use this for five years. It's just a way of breaking up the depreciation on the vehicle. Any depreciation accruals over time, you just ask how long are we going to depreciate this for? How long is it going to show up on our books that way? And so you pick something that's, you know, standard. And five years for, I know, car vehicles is common. The work trucks I'm not familiar with, but 10 years, you know, makes sense. They usually, diesel lasts a little longer. No?
No, it's the same.
Too long?
Yeah, way too long. I wish I could...
Yeah, way too long. I wish I could have got 10 years of everything to appreciate. And I'd kiss you.
But yeah, it's like, just as an option where you can get almost 70% in the first year if you take it in one chunk. And then it's, I think it's down to three now.
Yeah.
Municipality could be different, but I, me and Tom had talked one time about, you know, how long are we going to actually really keep these ones? You know, we don't want to keep them where all of a sudden, they're going to start pottin' us to death. You know what I mean? Tranny and then a rear end. So do we keep them, you know, five years or do we keep them seven, 10? They're junk. You know what I mean? So then we even talked about maybe you get into some, some towns lease so that, you know, they can turn them over quicker and faster. And it, and it's, it's a little bit of a savings because you can write that off too.
Yeah, but my, just in base, basically, my understanding is that this is really just to, to deal with the accounting of it. It's not a,
But they make, they make trucks better today, sort of, than they do years ago. But now they're starting to become electrical nightmares.
Yeah, that's right.
So that, you know, mechanical is, is, is better. You know, everybody's jumping on, going back to old trucks. But the, as far as the way they build them and put them together, they're, they do last a lot longer. You get a jet truck that was thrown together and it shakes itself apart. Now they've figured out where it shakes itself apart and then they, they fix it. Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I'm not trying to make us stay here until 11 o'clock at night. I just, I wanted to, So I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to, to alert us the fact that, that we need to think about these things, not in terms of this is the maximum life. Like, this is, this is actually our policy, right? I mean,
This is our accounting policy.
Right.
It's, we're not going to throw this truck away after five years.
No, I understand that.
Because that our useful life is five years.
But it gives an argument for that to happen. And, and all I'm saying is, if this is bond council's policy, then maybe we should, maybe we should say that it is bond council's policy and we're, we're, we deal with it differently than, than, than just using these, these numbers. I, I guess I wouldn't turn these things in at five years and 10 years. And it seems to me that that's what this is saying, you know?
No, it's just saying that you're going to record your depreciation over five years. Do we have a, a motion to approve item F?
It's just a depreciation over five years.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Can we get, I'll second it, but go ahead.
My question was, for other trucks, do these fall in alignment, the 10 years and five years? Or is this something unique, arbitrary?
I would say that's Scott and Joe's expertise. Is ametrisious.
So for the, the jet truck, 10 years? Because we have, we have trucks. So what's the useful life of our existing?
This, this truck doesn't go out every day. So it isn't like it's, it's moving every day, every day, every day. It's like when there's a, a jam up or they have to, you know, clear a pipe to, to get it TV cammed. So the jet truck doesn't go out every day. It goes out when it, and it has to be. So its life will be longer. So the actual, like, like Tom said, it probably could go 20 years, the way they maintain it. You know what I mean? They don't just put it away wet and let it rust. They'll, they'll, they'll lube it and then it sits for two days and it'll go out for two days, it'll go out for a week. It might be sitting two weeks. But the, the pickup, that'll probably be moving all the time. The only thing that's going to cut its longevity down is, is plow and snow.
So for, from an accounting standpoint and depreciation over the life, we've had other trucks. So what was the useful life for those other trucks?
I, I was just going to throw the example out. If you recall, because we weren't doing it the right way, we had a problem with trash trucks. Because the industry standard for flipping those trucks around is 10 years. And that's what the major trash companies in this area use with the elements that we drive in and the roads. They take a beating, going down narrow roads, turning. And we had trucks that were 20 years old. We weren't ordering them when we should. That's why we got jammed up where trash routes weren't being done. And the previous superintendent of Public Works admitted that he was behind the eight ball and keeping up with the process. And he wasn't keeping the current standards. That's when we got in that jam. So Scott's correct on, on the water truck. I agree 100% with him that it's not a truck that's on the road all day like a trash truck. So that number is, is fair. That's why our number with trash trucks now are half of what they used to be. So that we're recycling them out when they're really going to start to cost us. So I, I don't have a problem. I'll be voting for this.
Okay. So there was a motion on the table and was it seconded?
Mr. McCrisky, I seconded it.
Okay, I'm ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No problem. Okay, so motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second?
Second, okay, made by Ms. McCrisky, seconded by Ms. Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is 11:44. Have a wonderful evening, everybody, with what's left of it. I'll, we'll see you guys on, no later than November 6th. And go out to vote on November 5th. Thanks. Bye.